I think the order is seven o'clock. And rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve or amend the agenda. Go on, a second.
A second.
I got Jordan a second. At all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. We have approved our agenda. All right, order of business is approval of the minutes of November twenty first, two thousand twenty four. All right, is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Hearing none, all in favor. Updates from the Board of Adjustments, Jordan?
We had one variance today, which we'll be seeing petition for as well here for Bezon Stone. We granted a variance for an access road on steep slopes. Between the tow and top of the bluff.
Okay, anything else?
There was quite a bit of discussion and it was a split vote on that one.
Okay. Marsha County Board?
The petition for the home occupation and it would be New Hartford Township last week was approved.
Anything else?
Well, we're having, we did get requests for proposals for updating the comp plan and we're going through those. I'm not sure where we're going with that. It's quite a hefty price tag that comes when you hire any kind of consultants. And I don't like to spend money I don't have to spend. The price tag is at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah.
It's an expensive book.
Yes, and I'm proposing that maybe we take, and the county board hasn't, I'm just part of a subcommittee. The county board hasn't taken any action on it at this point in time yet.
Okay, we'll wait and see what you come up with.
Yeah, it's an update. It's not a whole rewrite, so I, yeah, it's a healthy price tag.
We'll keep focused on that. Our next agenda are the petitions. First one is docket PC number twelve dash nine dash twenty four oh one. It's to consider a petition of Jeremy and Rebecca Church who are seeking a conditional interim use permit regarding the following. To allow a new single family dwelling on less than forty acres in a parcel that is approximately twenty one acres in size. Pursuit to section ten point four point six thirty six of Winona County ordinance. And Lou, you have this one?
Yeah, I'll run you through a few slides as usual. The petition is located on County Road seven. Close to halfway between Highway sixty one and La Moya and the unincorporated community of Pickwick. And Homer Township, section thirteen. You can see it in this map highlighted in light blue. And you can see Big Trout Creek running through a portion of the property on its way to Highway sixty one. It is a twenty one point five acre parcel. And you can see the subset where it's located. In case you're not familiar with Pickwick, it's kind of in the eastern part of the county. On, near the border with Richmond Township. There's a little closer view of the parcel. The zoning is ARC. There is an existing garage and shed, or shed or barn that's, I don't know if you can see it, it's a little bit to the, to the right of the proposed dwelling there. See the white roof of the shed and then the barn is just to the south of that. It's an older structure. The twenty one point five acre parcel was created just a few years ago, I think two thousand twenty two. And it came off of the parcel, a larger parcel that made up most of that quarter quarter section and was attached to the house across the street. So that kind of explains why there's just a couple of accessory structures there. They were attached to that dwelling across the street and then it was split down County Road seven and created two separate parcels. Just a few years, just a few years ago. And so that new parcel being less than forty acres is the reason why we're here tonight. To consider a new dwelling on a parcel of less than forty. Another slide showing slopes. Those lines on the map are ten foot contours. But it gives you an idea of the slopes up above the bluff that extends out to the north across the road. And then there is a slope that goes down towards Big Trout Creek below the proposed dwelling. That the rise from Big Trout Creek up to the proposed dwelling is about seventy feet. So it's less than the definition for a bluff. But those are steep slopes. And most of that is within Shoreland District as well. But the proposed dwelling is just outside of that shoreline, so you know, those, that's not an issue in this case. So the existing dwelling location is pretty flat in that, that small field up on top of, up above the slope next to the road. There is a hundred foot setback from County Road seven and that's indicated in red on the map. So they're kind of, they have a nice little building site in between the slopes that go down to Big Trout Creek. And then before you get to the setback to County Road seven. There are class one through three soils on the property and those are indicated in purple here on the map. They're class two Festina silt loams. However, the entire parcel, over the entire parcel, those only make up twelve percent of the land on the parcel. And that's less than the forty percent in the ordinance that, that would qualify for the exemption. So in this case soils would not be, they'd be, the proposal would be exempt from the soil requirement. And so those aren't consideration for us tonight either. Some photos just to give you an idea of the lay of the land. This is looking southwest along County Road seven towards Pickwick. The proposed building site is on the left, so you can see that, that it's kind of a hayfield. That's there. You can get an idea of the size of that. And then there's a tree line to the left there that indicates the start of the slope that would go down towards Big Trout Creek. This is a little bit further towards Pickwick, looking back the other way towards Highway sixty one. And we can see the existing structures on the, on the property. And then the proposed building site would just be to the right. The photo doesn't quite capture the, the building site, but it's, it's right there in that field that you can see there. This is from the same location looking towards Highway sixty one, just capturing the other side of the road. So you can see the bluffs looking towards Highway sixty one and La Moya. And then the existing dwelling that's across the street from the proposed site. The petitioners did make it to Homer Township and got their township acknowledgement form signed in November, on November eleventh. And the township indicated support. And then as always, consider all materials and testimony before making findings to support your decision. Staff analysis and draft findings would support granting the CUP. And there are three conditions that are pretty standard that would be attached to similar types of permits. That's all I have. Have any questions off, off the bat for me?
Just a small slide. I know it's Homer and yeah, Hillsdale and part of it, just to
Oh, did I? Did it? Wow, I hate, hate my lessons. Well, let's, thanks. Nobody would have noticed, Mike. I'll get it next time. Thank you.
Question, maybe, I don't remember the dimensions. You say, is it a hundred, the building has to be a hundred feet from the county road?
The center line of County Road seven, yep, so.
That's, that's our standard deviation. But now what's the setback from a township road? That's different, right?
Township roads are generally considered local roads and the setback would be sixty five feet from the center line. This is the county road and it's considered a minor collector. And so minor collectors get a hundred foot setback.
Okay, all right, thank you for reminding.
Yeah, and just FYI, some county roads, major collectors would get a hundred and thirty foot setback. So it can vary depending on the, on different factors of the road.
Meet this hundred foot?
They can, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Lou? Thank you.
You bet.
Would the petitioners like to comment on their building site and their proposal right up? I'll give you name and address.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Church.
And I'm Jeremy Church.
We currently live at three fifty one East Eighth Street here in Winona County. Lived at, at that house for about eighteen years. We, Jeremy has grown up in Pickwick all his life. He still has family there. His parents are still out there and send a family. In fact, most of our land will border his cousin's land. So it's land he's familiar with. We've always wanted to get back out there. Pickwick is very hard to buy in and very expensive to buy in. So this opportunity came up about three years ago and we took it. And now we're just working on hoping to build this spring. So we're grateful for the opportunity for you guys to take your time and energy to look at this and we are asking you to grant this. There's many steps after this, as you know, so this is just step one. But again, thank you for taking so much time, so much energy, went in from planning and zoning and how you guys reviewed it. I mean, we just are really eager to be able to do this. Kind of get back to his roots. I grew up in the country. I grew up in Fremont. So we are very excited if we can move forward with this opportunity.
So if you have any questions, let us know.
Do you guys have any questions? I mean, you got a nice document.
Right.
Anybody?
I do.
All right, sure.
So you've got twenty one acres. What do you plan to do with the acreage? Apparently it's, I think, is it cropland, some of it?
There's just a hayfield up there now.
And a lot of woods.
And then it's just mainly woods and then the creek bottom, Big Trout Creek bottom there. So I grew up there. I personally hunt, so that's where I hunt and then plus it borders my family's farm there too. So just additional to the family farm.
Okay, no desire to subdivide and build?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to open the public hearing.
We'll move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, all in favor. Our public hearing is open. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the mic and state your name and address. I'm seeing somebody coming up. For the second time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition? Now's your time to come up to the podium, state your name and address and your concerns. Okay, for the third and final time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the podium and speak for or against it.
Mike, I was advised today that somebody was trying to, that's why I'm looking at the screen, was trying to get on virtually. So if anybody out there virtually, you need to unmute yourself and, and to be recognized. Somebody had problems today. I believe it was the Board of Adjustment meeting. They couldn't, they couldn't get through.
And here I'm relying on the staff to help me out on that.
Don't see anybody taking the mic off?
I see some familiar initials. Okay.
Okay, all right.
With that said, motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so seven, since it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. What are your wishes, Commission?
Louis, motion to approve it because we haven't seen go through the comp plan and everything else we've been trying to do there.
Second that motion.
Was finding a fact and the recommendation, is that all I understand?
Correct.
Okay, any other conversation? Otherwise we'll move.
I'm sorry, what page is the point, this finding of fact?
The finding of fact, I was just looking at it. Twenty two.
Twenty one and twenty two, okay, all right.
Most of the finding of fact plus the conditions.
Yeah, they said three, we're just.
So the conditions are on the next page, Marsha.
Yes.
In case you need a second, I'll second it. Okay, we're getting there. We just had some questions.
Okay.
So we have a motion to accept findings of fact. And the conditions to approve. And you second it, Jane, okay? Any other concerns? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so all in favor. And your next hearing will be Tuesday, January seventh at nine AM at the county here, okay? Our next petition is docket PC twelve dash nineteen dash twenty four dash oh two. This is to consider petition of Bezon Stone who's seeking a conditional interim use permit regarding the following. To allow land disturbance activity in excess of one thousand cubic yards on steep slopes for the purpose of building an access road in pursuit to Winona County zoning ordinance section ten point four point six dash twenty two and eleven point six point one dash two. So go ahead, Olivia.
Good evening. So to get into the site a little bit, this petition would be for an access road. And Jordan mentioned earlier too that they did receive a variance from three different standards, which I'll get into in a little bit. But the site overview itself, it is located in Hillsdale Township, section twenty four. The three parcels that would be involved, that the access road would be going over, equate to about three hundred and sixty five acres combined. The access would be from an existing access point off of Quarry Hill Road that does have an address and serves some of Bezon's buildings out there already. So you'll notice in a lot of the materials that there are reference to ownership and access and the sale of a property. So I wanted to take a second just to go through some of the ownership information and how it relates to the petition. So you'll see there's two different colors of parcel numbers on that aerial image there. There's three that are outlined in like a yellow tanish and then three that are outlined in a red. So the three, I can point them out too, but the three that are up in the upper right corner are owned by Construction Ventures, Inc., which does business as Bezon Stone. They're the petitioners where the access road would be going across. And then the three in red here are owned by Charles Bezon's Revocable Trust and Barbara Posans. So they're separate parcels, but they're owned by the same entity. And so in September of two thousand twenty four, the sale of parcel with the last four zero four one one happened. So Charles Bezon's and, Charles Bezon's Trust and Barbara Posans owned zero four one one. Construction Ventures, Inc. purchased it from them as a part of that sale. One of the conditions was that Bezon's worked towards building a vehicular access for those three other parcels.
Before you leave that slide, can you identify, what's the wider parts? Is it, is that cropland or is that the quarry part of the land?
The quarry is up in this general area. These are fields.
Fields.
Yep. So an overview of the site created by staffs, you can see there in the upper right. That's kind of the, the red hatched is the approximate access road. There are contours that are ten feet on there. So you can see kind of the steeper areas that they'd be getting into. One of them is just over in this area where it gets steeper, then levels off a bit through the field and then does get a little bit steeper. Which is part of the reason they needed the variance request. And then you can see the parcel outlines as well with showing how they would be going across all three of their parcels to get to the access point, yep.
The square right below the red line, is that another property owner? Everything on, I would call it, in the bottom, south or surface?
Right, yep. So where the road comes down to the south here, that is parcel zero four four zero. So the road would come across here and end just on this property line.
So that parcel to, just to the right, who, that's a different property owner?
Here?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and where's the nearest resident in that picture?
The house would be here. It's about over a thousand feet from the closest point of the proposed access road.
Okay, thousand feet. Thank you.
Yep. So petitioner provided site plans. The petitioner, Bezon Stone, did work with Johnson and Schofield. They hired an engineer to create engineered plans for them. They are in your packet, pages sixty three through eighty six. They break out the access road into different sections. You can get a good idea of the areas of disturbance, contours, a lot of information. They do need to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is called a SWIP. There is the state stormwater, state construction stormwater permit that would be required because they're disturbing more than an acre. So that is part of that permitting process. Some of the project overview, the petitioners have proposed the access road as a way for the trust and Barbara Posans parcels to access their property. Right now, there's not a set vehicular access for them to get to those properties. So that is the reason that they're bringing the request forward. As I mentioned, it was a condition of that parcel sale zero four one one, that Bezon's works towards providing access. The access road itself would be about three thousand feet in length, finished drivable width of twenty five feet. So some of the land disturbance information, we do require a conditional interim use in the ARC zoning district for anything over a thousand cubic yards. So they are proposing about, I mean, twenty three to twenty four thousand cubic yards of disturbance, about, about three thousand yards of cutting, about twenty one six for fill. Like I said, they are working with an engineer. They have provided plans that an engineer has done for them. And we're also out on site with them to walk through what their plans were. As I mentioned in the beginning, they did receive the variance. They needed that because of the steep slopes. It would be over twenty five percent in some areas. Anything disturbing between the tow and the top of the bluff, they needed a variance for, as well as working within a hundred feet of the top of the bluff, they needed a variance as well. And Jordan mentioned the variance was granted on a three two vote earlier today. Some of the site considerations, all three of the parcels that the road would be on are considered agriculture resource conservation for their zoning. There was land clearing disturbance in portions of the work area prior to the application being submitted. The petitioner was in earlier this summer and mentioned that some of the tree cutting had begun already as a part of the project. You'll notice that in some of the pictures. They are proposing to use former field roads and existing grades where feasible. As a part of them coming in in the summer, we did look at alternative routes across their property to see if there were other areas that would be better suited for a road such as this. Most of them did require either more land disturbance or steeper slopes or something that would be more detrimental to the landscape than the route that they are proposing. So I was out on site with staff from Soil and Water as well as Bezon staff and Johnson and Schofield. We did the site visit last week, twelve ten. We did review the petition with the petitioners and the group out on site. And then Soil and Water and Winona County Highway Department did provide written reviews for you as well that are in your packets. Our recommendation of this petition would be to treat it as an interim use permit because it does have an identifiable end date or activity. That being the completion of the land disturbance activities. So that's how we have drafted the findings and the conditions. And one thing to note too on the variance, the Board of Adjustment did add a condition that stated that the petitioner obtains approval of its construction plan specifications from the Winona County engineer to basically consider highway department's comments as a part of the project. So some of the overview pictures, the bottom left shows you kind of an aerial where we were approximately on the path with the picture taken in the upper right. So you can see this is looking west towards the first kind of curved area. This is looking roughly southwest, again, towards that main curve. Looking west again, continuing down the proposed access road area. And this is getting up into that field portion of where the road would be placed. You can see that they are proposing to utilize trails that are already in place. And then this is almost towards the end where it's going to start curving down towards the property that it would be serving, still looking west. And then this is looking directly south onto the property that the road would ultimately end right on the property line of the trees on the left of that picture are where the property corner is for that area. So this is going back the other way, back towards the beginning. So this is looking east. You can kind of see how the road curves in the background of that picture. This is looking down one of the steeper drops of the, the steeper slope of the area now. We're standing above it, but you can kind of see how the road, it drops down and then continues on. Still looking east. So that's the last photo that I have in the presentation. But Hillsdale Township did submit their acknowledgement form in support of the project. The petitioners went on August twelfth. And the written comment that was provided to us on the forum is that the town is in support of the proposed access road with engineering. The road will allow for the future sale of other existing parcels with the addition of the road and will prevent these parcels from being landlocked. So our recommendation would be, as always, you consider all materials and testimony before making findings that support your decision. As I mentioned, our analysis and findings do support granting it as an interim use permit with an identifiable end activity. And should you decide to approve the petition, we've drafted five conditions for your consideration. A lot of information in your packet. So are there any questions for me off the bat? Yes?
The engineering plans, they're talking about the silt fence and the weeper cross section probably for prevention of erosion. The six foot boulder wall, is that, is that going to be?
Yep, it's just in a portion of, it's in this, this steeper slope. So it's meant to, I believe, help with vehicles if there's any sliding in wintertime, but also to help the sediment go through and to stop erosion.
Louis?
What's the worst slope on any part of that road? Are we sitting somewhere and go like this or are we fairly level?
I think it was calculated at twenty six percent existing slope. Finished grade of the road is eleven point two at the steepest.
If they get a heavy rain, is the road going to wash out in any spot? That might be better off to have.
Yeah, it's not something I can answer. I can tell you that the county highway engineer did identify potential erosion issues that have been communicated with the petitioner and they would work to address those before we would actually move forward with land disturbance.
Marsha?
Do you have an definition of an access road?
I don't.
Okay, can anybody tell me what, what we determine as an access road?
It's a, it's a private road, so it could mean what they would want it to.
Okay, how close is that private road to other, again, do we have definitive? We just had a petition where they have to build a hundred feet from the center of a county road. Do we have any distance regulations? How close they can build a road to the neighboring property? Because it does run, if you go back to the picture, does it run greater?
There is no setback for, yeah, I mean, there is an easement that covers that area to serve the other, to serve the Charles Bezon's Trust.
Well, there's some great concern of the neighboring property owner that building this may cause, and we've said erosion and run off onto their property. And it looked like the road was built right on the property line. Am I wrong? I mean, it looked like that red dot went right along the property. I mean, it looked like that red dot went right along the property line. We don't have any dimensional that you have to have a road so far off the property line.
Correct.
How close can you build a house to a property line?
Depends on the property line. 20 feet?
In that area, is it?
It's a side yard 20 feet, it's a rear yard 50 feet.
In ag, natural resources? Okay, okay, all right, consistent. It does say it's going to be a private road, so I think I did listen in, there's, it's going to be gated, it's not, it is going to technically be private. Only the landowners that are going to be using that road.
Correct, yep.
And to what standard is that road being built? There's some very concerned neighbors about that road become, being used for the quarry operations of trucks hauling product out that road instead of some of the existing roads. How do we, we, and again, in the, you know, we use that very broad, the owner of the property abid by the representation and comments. And in your staff report, I think I see three ways. They say the petitioners have stated the anticipated, stated anticipated use will be light vehicle access to adjacent lands for hunting recreation. And then there's another place where it talks about recreation and ag purposes. And I think there's, I think I saw in three of them. So how do we assure the neighbors that that road, again, I guess, to what standard weight vehicle is that road being built? I know you're not an engineer, I'm not either, so I don't know what standard they're being built. But how do we protect them? My concern is protecting the neighbors that it doesn't become a quarry hauling road and coming out right next to their, and literally right next to their property.
Sure. I can't speak to what the future use of that road is, other than what it was presented as in the application. I can say that the standards we have for access only come into play when it is dwelling or serving some sort of development. Right now, this road is being proposed to essentially provide access to properties that are undeveloped for recreation, agriculture, those types of things.
It feels to me like it's an overbuilt ATV trail. I mean, it's very, it's very built. It's not just a, and that was talked about this afternoon, is it wasn't accessible by ATVs and such. So how, I guess I'm looking to staff, how would we guarantee, because who's the, who's the owner of this variance? That was confusing. Who owns the property now and who's going to own that road? The new owners or the Bez, I'm confused, who really owns it? And who we would hold, I guess, the idea is who would we hold accountable that it is just a recreation farming road, not a quarry access road at some point in the future?
I could speak to the ownership piece of that.
So who owns the road?
Yep, so there's going to be an easement, there is an easement already that's been recorded, that the access road would be over. That would be the responsibility of Bezon's, which operate Construction Ventures Inc., are the owners of these three parcels. So they would be responsible for maintaining that road.
So they, well, maintaining it, but then they would also be responsible for who's allowed to use the road? Meaning they're in the quarry business, so could they potentially use that road to haul quarry materials out from that site?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. The easement allows for, yeah.
I'm trying to protect the neighbors that are there, because this is a pretty major, you know, it is the quarry, it's a huge operation.
If they're trying to haul quarry product out of that location, they'd need another conditional use, because right now it's not zoned for quarry. It's, it's ag.
ERC.
But could they come out of the, the neighbors are concerned that they would come out of the existing quarry and use that road?
Well, right now, it's a gated gate.
Yeah.
And on the right there, you'll see that road veering off to the quarry. Quarry really isn't on that picture.
No, it's, that's why I asked.
That's in the city of Winona.
Right.
Quarry is.
Yeah.
And that's who they have their permits through.
And we have no control over them granting access, but we do have control over the road, the potential use for the road, is what I'm saying. The neighbors are very concerned that it may turn into something different a few years down the way.
Well, then they'd have to come back, they'd have to repetition for something different. But we have easements all over the county.
Yes.
Back in the 1800s, they had easements right on the borders, you know, the land for water rights, get their cattle to water.
Yes.
And they were usually two rod easements, I don't think any of these can see us. But I farm land that's on an easement, and I, I have to get there driving down a dirt path, okay? But that's the definition of the easement, to get to that landlocked area.
Right.
And I do drive through where the owner of that property is, but that easement was granted before they bought that property. And they have to allow me to take the easement.
Right, but again, I'm trying to protect the neighbors from having it turn into a quarry access road with materials haul, with high intensity. I, I don't know, I just, it, it isn't spelled out here, it's very.
What's spelled out is what's been presented to us in the petition.
I want to protect the neighbors.
Well, we do have one of the petitioners here, and I think he could answer that clearly.
Uh, that was questionable this afternoon, how clearly he can answer.
This road is not, it comes off of the Hillsdale Quarry Hill Road.
Right, yes.
And that's a dead end. Our road stops at that gate.
Yes.
And this road would go on the other side of that gate, it would not be on Quarry Hill Road. It's on Bezon property, so.
Yeah, just, can I try to clarify? So the, the material coming out of the quarry is going to Quarry Hill Road to, to wherever it's going. This road would be going in the complete opposite direction, so there would be no, unless there is a new quarry approved on that parcel, there would be no reason to haul material that direction at all.
The county would have, have to approve that.
And that would have to be approved as another quarry.
We wouldn't have to prove that, because it's a private road. We, we would have no jurisdiction of.
No, I'm talking about the quarry in property.
To have a quarry there.
Use it for coring, the road for coring, you'd have to have a quarry.
Is that part, is all, all those parcels in the county? I know it's a.
They're in the township.
Divided line.
And they're in our county.
Right, but the actual.
Not in the city.
But the actual quarry is in the city. Okay, well, again, I just, they've represented in here, but to me, it's very loose. Oh, we're just going to use it for recreation and hunting, and 10 years down the road, oh, well, we've changed. I don't know how to protect the neighbors that have been there, that have lived there. Their, their general welfare and their property rights and everything too, is what I'm looking for.
It's more than just recreational. It's to avoid a landlocked 160-acre parcel of land. And once you have your land, landlocked, unless you have a helicopter, I don't know how you, it's useful to anyone.
Well, in my opinion, it became landlocked when they sold a parcel off, and that happens a lot, you know? You sell a parcel off, and then that created it being landlocked. And we're not supposed to approve things from a financial support, the variance board, you're not supposed to look at finances. So they sold something that created the problem.
On the condition that this easement goes through.
So one thing to note too on that.
A variance.
The sale of 04.
It's already there, that's been there. We aren't granting an easement.
Well, to me, the reason that it's in front of us is they're moving more than 1,000 square yards.
Yeah, they're moving a lot of dirt.
That is, to me, the real reason that we're talking about this.
Right.
Not that we're building a four lane highway. Because to get to that, it hasn't been farmed this year at all, that, that is farmed minimally over the years. So to get back there, they used this, but most of it, they went through their own property, so it really wasn't an easement. They had a, a field road to get there. And now they're trying to upgrade it, get it closer, you know, to where the land ownership parcels are, rather than, you know, zigzag and V8 it through and do all these other things. But it is, the terrain is challenging, there's no question about that.
Just one point of clarification too, the sale of that parcel 0411, those parcels are already technically didn't have road access. They were already accessing them through Construction Ventures Inc., yep. This would just create a drivable access, essentially. Any other questions for me?
I have a question. On here, it indicates the, like, the limit of grading that they're going to do. And I imagine grading isn't just carving wayland, it's going to be also establishing terrain there. So it looks like it's kind of the more bulbous point here. And I'm curious, when they go to establish it, is there a requirement in the ordinance or in state law that they use a particular seed mix or something? Like, is it going to be, can you speak to any of that? Like, is it just going to be, they've just thrown dirt on the ground, and is it just allowed to go back wild or?
They do need to establish vegetation. Part of the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, does have requirements which are through the state. But there was a seed mix that was identified in the Soil and Water Report. That was the recommendation for them to use.
51.
Yep.
Is the timing of the, of the earth moving also, I would guess they think about when we get most rain, when we have significant rain and things, do they look at that?
I will, I'll let them speak to that. I would assume it would be easier if it was less wet while they're working. I think their intention was to start in the spring if it were approved.
Any other questions before we have the petitioner come up and maybe answer some of your questions? Thank you, Olivia.
Thanks.
Could the petitioner come up and, when you get here, state your name and address?
Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission, Director, Staff, thank you for your time. My name is Jonathan Schwab. I work for Bezon Stone here in town. Our Bezon's office is 4600 Goodfield Road. I'm going to go ahead and start just with an intro. I know there's a lot of information, not sure. Sorry if some of this is repetition, some of it will be from Olivia's overview. I'm on page 59 of your packets. So again, just broadly, September of this year, Construction Ventures doing business as Bezon's, I'll just refer to us as Bezon's going forward, purchased the parcel that ends in 0411, and the previous owners of the parcel, who are Chuck and Barb. Chuck was the previous owner of Bezon Stone for many years, Barb's his sister. So they share ownership of these remaining three parcels and were the previous owners of parcel zero, ending in 0411. They own the adjacent parcels ending in 0540, 0440, and 0450. And as previously discussed, with the sale of the parcel ending in 0411, those parcels became even more landlocked than they already were. Part of the purchase agreement, as mentioned, was that we would do everything in our power to put an access road in and one that was accessible for cars. So not four-wheeler, not on foot, not high clearance four-by-four cars. As Olivia mentioned, the proposed road will cross portions of all three of our parcels in the county and will end at the northeast corner of parcel ending in 0440. Currently, the parcel that we purchased, ending in 0411, is followed farmland and hillside woodland. As the chairman mentioned, it has been farmed on and off in previous years and has not been farmed this year. That farmland, my understanding, is that parcel, as well as the three that are still owned by the previous owners, were farmed as a group, which sort of makes sense, because they were all owned by the same people. Skipping a little bit, most of the proposed road's route, as Olivia mentioned, will be a widening of existing farm or old logging roads. There will be some deviations from one of the other of these to minimize soil and slope disturbance, reflect updated surveys of the property line, and streamline easement routing. The finished intended drivable width is approximately 25 feet, accounting for a safety berm. Ms. Carlson, you asked about the boulder berm, and that is intended as a safety feature. I'll get to, I can go through some of the plans in a little more detail if you're interested. There are a few sections of the road because of the steepness of the side hill where there will be a significant amount of fill. So we need to be very aware of the potential risk for vehicles on there. But that's not intended to be along the whole course of the road. Length approximately 3,000 feet. When completed, the road will be topped with crush rock. Did not put in there, the intended road base is shotrock. So being a quarry, we have a lot of material moving around, so shotrock, when you blast, you get rock that's, in our case, anywhere from two feet ideally down, but we also have material that's significantly larger than that. So that's the ideal base for what we build the road on, and then we'll use fresh rock as a topper. The surveying and engineering firm of Johnson and Schofield, their engineering are based at a Red Wing, has drawn up detailed site plans which include hydrology, erosion control plans, and a SWIP. Olivia also mentioned some of the disturbance that happened before we approached the county, and that was my responsibility. That was a mea culpa on my part. Reading through the zoning ordinance, I misunderstood it, that we could do an acre of forestry without approval, and because of where we are with our property and where that was, that was incorrect.
How much did you remove?
It was right around an acre. But it's in the bluff land, so that's the issue. I'll go through a few other questions I heard, as well as some details on the county engineer's suggestions. We know that we're a quarry, and that can invoke, evoke some strong feelings from neighbors. And we also know that in the past, frankly, Bezon's hasn't been the best neighbor. And we're doing everything we can in our power to be good neighbors going forward. We are a quarry, so there is some limit of what we can do, but we want to do the best, minimize, to your point in this word, to minimize erosion, stormwater, you know, we don't want water going on to our prop, our neighbor's property to the north. The county engineer addressed some concerns with water going down through Hidden Valley, with sediment going down through Hidden Valley, we don't want that either. We've got enough property, we can, we need to figure out how to do it, deal with it on our property and keep it on our property, and that's our goal. If you got a chance to look through the plans from the engineers, they are pretty thorough. We've gone through multiple revisions. I'll actually go ahead and move on to that next. If you go to page 47, 46, is the email from the county engineer to the staff, and he also sent it to our engineer that we have contracted with. So his main concerns are about erosion and possible sediment going downstream, which would wind up in Hidden Valley and eventually in Bowler's Lake, I believe is the name of it. Just a few quick comments. Our engineer, of course, it's the end of the year, so this week was his first week of vacation. So I had a brief conversation with him about this. I'm not an engineer, so take everything I say with a grain of salt, but we did talk about it briefly. Also, as Olivia noted, our variance that we were granted today does have the condition, before we start any earthwork, that our plans are approved by the county engineer. All plans for earthwork, grading, et cetera, will need to be approved by the county engineer. Talking with our engineer, he believes that we can keep our design substantially as it is and satisfy the concerns, satisfy or relieve the concerns of the county engineer. If you really want to get into the weeds, the county engineer's two main areas of concern, they're a little confusing, but if you go to page 73, and then, so he has from station 17 to 23. So station 17 is on the middle of page 73, it's kind of towards the top. It's a little hard to see, the stations are marked perpendicular to the road course. So station 17 is about contour line 1170, and then as the road goes west, which is up the page, you go back a page, and station 23 is about halfway up page 72. So his concern there, there are a few spots where the uphill slope of the road drains across the road. And again, brief conversation with our engineer, we think we can come up with something that will prevent that issue on the uphill side and/or treat the potential erosion or potential sediment movement on the downhill side in a way that will satisfy the engineer without requiring total redesign of the road, which could, we're trying to avoid redesign of the road because that could be a different set of questions. If we totally redesign the road, then it's kind of a different animal. The second area that he highlighted, which is frankly the prickier area, the one that's given us a little more of a headache, starts on page 75. That's from station 6 to 12. So if you go to page 75, station 6 is right near the top of the page. It's at a little bit of an angle. And then if you go back to page seventy-four, you can see, I believe, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name, Mr. Ostad, is that correct? I believe it was you or maybe Ms. Carlson that noted the large amount of fill going down the hill. That's a result of the, pardon me, that's a result of the steepness of the slope and the requirement of having a stable and safe road there. That slope is so steep that unfortunately, the fill is going to go a long way down the road. So a couple other brief thoughts on the road. The county engineer commented about crowning the road. The reason the road isn't crowned in those problem areas is we're trying to keep all the water going north.
Definition of crowning?
So crowning, he explains it briefly here. Crowning basically means the middle of a road is the highest point, so that the water will run off both directions. His concern here is ours is not crowned, so all of the water goes one way.
Any culverts along this? I don't see any.
Yes. There are, on page seventy-four, there are two culverts, they're the red lines. And those are in the two gullies coming off of our neighbor's property. And those are a forty-eight inch and thirty-six inch. And those sizes are based off of their hydrology estimates of water coming off of the.
That's quite a, that can hold quite a volume, right?
Yes.
And that's going to the, onto your own property, not somebody else's?
Yes, that's going on to our property. Another one of the engineer's concerns with those culverts is on the plans as they're currently laid out. There isn't any detail about what happens with the water that comes out of the downhill side of those culverts. What we talked about with soil and water and staff and has not been updated on the plans is to do riprap on that. Again, this is all, all of these plans are going to have to be, if you guys recommend and if the county board approves, it's still going to have to go through the county engineer to get he and his team's approval on it. But the plan is not to just have that dumping onto whatever dirt happens to be there. Is the plan there. That will also be, again, there are some other questions we'll have to work through with sort of the eastern end of the road, where some of that water will wash across it, and how we get around that problem. Potentially some ditches, adding some ditches there and tinkering with the culverts. But the downhill slope, the base material, the downhill slope, again, is shotrock, which does not erode. It's actually a great catcher, and that's part of what we talked about with soil and water conservation is as we build. So we'll have silt fences, which are also laid out in the plans before we start. And then the shotrock base will actually serve as our silt fence as we work our way up the hill, again, assuming everything's proved and so forth. Let me see, what else?
How many?
It's about three thousand feet, right around three thousand feet.
And with your detailed engineering, what's the cost per? We build roads all the time, and roads are expensive. It seems like your detailed is pretty intense for a recreational hunting road.
Well, unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, unfortunately, from our perspective, building a road through here, through the bluff land area with steep slopes, there isn't a way around it being cheap. You gotta have someone who knows what they're doing to it, and that doesn't come cheap. So I don't think I'm at liberty to say, but.
I'm, I'm reserved in that it's going to maintain as, and of course, we would control that building that it's just recreation and hunting land, because I think it's very expensive.
I can address that concern in a minute. Would you be okay if I keep going through the engineer's concerns really briefly?
Thank you.
So, let's see. Just reiterating again, we do not want to cause sediment issues. We don't want to cause erosion issues for our neighbors, either our neighbors to the south who are uphill of us by knocking water up off the road or damming it, or by our neighbors downhill in Hidden Valley and Bowler's Lake and beyond. As far as the other items, so most, most of the issues, at least from my engineer, my non-engineering brain and from my brief conversation with our engineer, his things that stuck out to him most were under section two, the drainage provisions. The other items under section three, there's some things about permitting, which when we apply for the permit, we're going to have to get that stuff straightened out anyway. There's some stuff about the plans that, as they were updated multiple times, things didn't get caught. So there's something that refers, you know, there's discrepancies in the impervious surface amount kind of thing. If you're really curious or concerned about those, I can take a crack at them, but again, no guesses, no guarantees on how accurate those will be. Yes, Mr. Raymond?
Turn around and talk about putting riprap in there.
Yes.
What are you going to use for a binder between the riprap? Are you going to use some black soil? You got some clay that's in the quarry that you're going to bind?
That would be a question for the engineer. I'm not, I don't know that detail. That's not part of the design as it currently stands. If the county engineer thinks that's necessary, then we will certainly do that.
You got a lot of road, there are lots of deep slope, you might want to consider that.
We'll certainly mention it to our engineer when we get back together next year. The last thing I wanted to go over, and then I'll address some questions. I took notes on the easement, if you go to page eighty-seven. I do want to clarify that that easement did not exist before this transaction. That was an easement that was specifically requested by the owner, the previous owner. And if you, on page eighty-seven, if you look at point one, not exclusive easement for ingress and egress purposes over and across a crushed rock road, which was something that, again, during the hearing this afternoon, I had not read the easement that carefully. That easement does specifically say, now, I'm not a lawyer either, I don't know what the force is there, but the intention in the easement was not foot access or ATV access. The intention in the easement is specifically a crushed rock road. A few brief responses. Mr. Raymond, you had a question about steep slopes and erosion with heavy rain. That's the primary concern that the county engineer raised, was what happens to this road in a heavy rain? It's not crowned. Where does that water go? Again, brief conversation, thinking we can do it, we can fix it. Obviously, we will have to fix it, but we think we can fix it without. Yeah.
That I go road to.
Yeah. Well, certainly open to other suggestions. We talked about water bars, but that's going to make it an absolute nightmare to maintain with grading. If, you know, if we put in water bars every seventy feet, that's going to be a lot of work. Yeah. Ms. Ward, you had a question of definition of an access road, concern of erosion flooding our neighbor's property. Again, we don't want, we, we're going to do what we got to do with our water and keep our neighbors, the water from our neighbor's property going along the way it's been going. That's our intention. The standard use of the road, the request from the previous owners was to put an access road in. And as has previously been mentioned, any further use of that land besides what it is right now would be a whole separate application process. We are a quarry. It's not totally out of the picture, but there are so many, we don't know if our stone is in that property. We don't know if it would be economical to go after it. So it's not totally out of the realm of possibility, but it's not, I mean, that would be years and years and years. There's a whole CUP process, there's a whole, so the answer is sort of yes and no. Again, no, it's not out of the realm of possibility, but we don't have enough information to say we even want to try and go over there.
Well, you've stated numerous times that it's going to be hunting and recreation, so what it's going to be?
Well, and the hunting and recreation is for the existing property, the owners of five four zero, four four zero, and four five zero. And what they do with that property, you know, Chuck is, I believe, in his eighties. I don't know how old Barb is. My understanding, again, is that, again, I don't know them personally, so I can't say this for sure. My understanding, my, I would guess that there's a thought of what comes next. Is this, I don't even know what their kid situation is. I really don't know them well, but my guess is that they're thinking of posterity. Who are their heirs? Do they want to sell it so they can have a better retirement? I don't know.
But they won't own the road. Bezons will own the road.
The easement is tied to the parcels that it will go to. Now, it does.
What's the county's obligation to recognize the easement? I mean, it's, it's an easement, yes, but we're not obligated to do anything with the easement. That's private property, private property on it, right?
Part of, part of the proper, part of the easement agreement, as it's written, again, not a lawyer, and maybe you can clarify this, but as it's written, Bezons CVI is responsible for maintaining that. So it's, it's, we can't, basically whoever the, my understanding is whoever the property owner wants to use that road can use it. But we are responsible for maintaining it, and if that, if those properties change hands, that doesn't change that those property owners still have the easement, and we are still responsible. And I would assume furthermore that were CVI ever to sell that property to someone else, that responsibility would transfer with that, unless the owners got together with a lawyer and changed that.
We got a lawyer behind you here, so he can clarify.
So the beneficiary of the easement is the red parcels. CVI, as the easement requires them to maintain that gravel road, but it doesn't limit how they could use it. If, if it was used for something other than egress or egress of, of the red parcels, then there could be a claim between the parties. If CVI wanted to sue the owners because they're not using the, they're using the easement in a way that's not allowed under the easement. But in terms of the county, as long as they're doing something that's not regulated, CVI, it's, it's still their property and they could use it in any way that they're allowed to.
Saying here that it's recreation and such, so that doesn't hold.
So part of, part of the problem.
They don't own it.
Yeah.
It's, so it's mute. It's a mute point.
So part of the, part of the problem is, is that the beneficiaries of the easement aren't the petitioners. The petitioners are CVI, and so, you know, they're representing what presumably the petitioners have told them. They, they are going to use it for hunting and possibly agriculture, but there's nothing holding them to that.
So it's, it's a bunch of noncommittal, we can't hold them to any. We always say that we hold people to what's said in public hearings. So you're telling me that all this, oh, we're using it for hunting and recreation, it doesn't matter what they said here, we can't hold them to it. Because they don't own, because the three red parcels don't own the road, all they have is easement to their properties.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be an issue, because we do these types of approvals where we stay in approval that they represented certain things and they'll abide by those representations. So it's easy in that case to say if, if they're not abiding by the representations, there'd be, because they're one step removed from people who actually have the right to the easement, use the easement, it does create a more difficult issue if, if those representations are not followed.
Because Charles Bezon and Barb Pozant are not bound by disagreement at all.
Well, it.
Misagreement?
Well, in any of this, really, you're building the road on your property, you're going to maintain it, and you're going to have control over it to allow these people access. I understand all that, but again, we should look to who we can hold responsible for anything. And you've said, and you've said, like I said, staff three times that it was hunting and recreational, but we can't hold them to that. I don't know that we need to, but then again, why did we bother putting it in here and in?
I believe that it's in there, I believe that it's in there, it stated that the petitioner represented that that was the use, the intended use.
Well, so there, those are the currently existing approved land uses for the, those parcels. The county controls the land use.
Yeah, I totally understand, but we're always looking to who do we hold responsible for something when it goes wrong? And I guess at this, hold, because it's their road, upper and everything. My angst is that we say they're going to use it all this year. They're not here, they're not really, why do we bother even putting it in there then? That's part of my angst. We, we say people are going to do things and we're going to hold them to it, but we don't. I'm sorry, we don't. So, I mean, why do we put it in there?
When you say something goes wrong, are you talking about a severe rain event causing massive sedimentation down the slope? What do you mean, something goes wrong?
Well, it could, yeah, if it needs major reconstruction, we have a devastating, you know, weather event and stuff like that. So in this case, it would be Bezons.
I had a thought when we were doing our decommissioning of the solar gardens. Isn't there some sort of surety bond that we're requesting because we don't know who will be the owners down the road and in the future?
Yeah, we have, yes.
Wouldn't this be, would that be a vehicle to have some guarantee that if a disaster strike?
Well, I guess it is Bezons. It, it's confusing to me because we're talking about the three red parcels. That's a whole different party that owns them, and we're trying to get them access. They got it sold, so they created their own, in my interpretation of the rules, they created their own problem. Now we're trying to resolve the problem with this road, but it seems like it's a very high, intense, expensive road, and I'm a little leery that it's just going to be for hunting vehicles and, you know, recreation, knowing what the company does, and just like you said. And I have other neighbors that have called with very concerns of what may happen. Again, nobody knows.
So even though they're tying these parcels landlocked now, the road exists.
There's a path, there's a culvert path. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's how they got to the land until.
As a condition of the sale, the sale of that property four one one.
They wanted a crushed rock road, which the county had nothing to do with. That was private people.
Marsha, why wouldn't they want that?
Well, I know, but. But usually that's done before, this is kind of after the fact, and they cut down trees after the fact. And so there's a lot of things going on that.
That was an error, but I think we're losing our focus on what the petition is for.
It's moving the rock. Well, it relates to what the Board of Adjustment did.
It's two private things, but we're here about moving rock, moving over a thousand yards. Isn't that why we're here? Not to argue over the use of the road.
Well, it has.
But they use it for, it's two private parties. Why isn't it their choice to do that?
I'll argue in Marsha's case, because we are watching the Bezons as a revocable trust trade land with Bezons, the construction venture company, and they're, it's auspicious. It's a little auspicious to say that these have nothing to do with future mining projects, which you can state may be an end goal, and I'm not holding that against anyone here. But it, it reads a little bit more complicated if we think of the parties, as one is a condition of sale to put in the road to the trust that is directly arguably by name alone associated with this, this quarry operation. So I see where your concerns are, reasonable, but in terms of what we're here to discuss today, it's merely just because they're building in a bluff? Correct? Or they're, they're moving amount of earth.
The quantity and the steep slopes is my understanding.
Thank you. That, that is true.
And Gene? Is the three parcels in pink or red or whatever you want to call it, are they in Monona County or are they in the city?
No, they're in Hillsdale Township.
Hillsdale Township.
They are county.
They're still in the county too.
Yeah, I'm going to grab water, give me a second.
Now, when this was all owned by the same concern, the Bezons, there wasn't an issue because they could take their field road through and get that. But now they want to sell part of that property that was with the field road, and that's where this road comes in, the easement.
I understand that part.
And if, if they don't have some kind of access to that hundred and sixty acre, it's landlocked. And we don't want landlocked parcels of property because they become unaccessible. So the value of them is like zero, because what are you going to do with? So the value of them is like zero because what are you going to do with it? And right now it's.
County doesn't see it that way. I got landlocked land and they don't see it as, there's.
There's value.
Hunting, hunting, there's, there's still value. No, the, the county doesn't consider it zero.
Let's say I had a landlocked thing and the neighbor who wants the land, Jason says, your hunters aren't going through mine. So how do you get your hunters there? And that's the issue here, isn't it? If we recommend, if we voted and recommended that the county not allow this pathway to be turned into a crushed rock road, that's really irrelevant to what happens to the land in the future because 10 years from now, if there are people on the county board that are amenable to having this turned into a, a new quarry area and somebody wants to turn into quarry area, it'll be irrelevant whether there's a crushed rock road there or not. The whole land, that whole parcel of land will be transformed in a major way that, that's not what this, putting crushed rock on the road is going to do. And that extra quarry might not even be on this 160 we're talking about. That's could be on the Bezons property as it is now. But we're not addressing the owner, the Barb and Chuck that own this 160 acres.
If I can add a few points, which may or may not answer some questions or calm some concerns. First of all, Bezons has no interest in frac sand. That was a major, I know that was a major concern. I've heard, I think Fillmore just permitted another one. We're done. We like being somewhat able to go out in public and not get chased around. And it wasn't, it didn't really make sense long-term for the business. So the dimensional stone business is what our interest is. So I know that, just want to put that out there. I know me saying it doesn't have the force of law, but that is, has been a clear, consistent point is we have zero interest in that. That's not where we're going. You know, we're not trying to sneaky get our way into, oh, we can do this. That's, that's not the interest. And I know that has been a concern with neighbors. That was a tremendous amount of truck traffic with the frac sand. And frankly, if I'd lived there, I probably wouldn't have been too pleased either. I didn't. But another point as far as the earth moving, again, being a quarry, we're not planning on bringing fill in from the outside, so that's not an increase in truck traffic along Quarry Hill Road. That will be all on our own property, our own roads. What's that?
With your own material.
Yes. And we do have, we've got a water trailer. We've got material to make sure that if it's really, really dry, we're not dusting all the neighbors with the material we're moving. The other point, another question, Ms. Carlson, you had about timing of construction. We don't have a firm timeline of that. Our, the contractor we work with to do our earth moving in the quarry has done a significant amount of work in Wisconsin on some very large-scale projects. And again, all of the erosion control, the, one of the conditions, the staff recommended conditions for the conditional or interim use permit is, which I guess is covered under the variance condition already, but that the county engineer approve all sediment and erosion control portions of the plans. And timing is certainly, I mean, if it's a mud puddle, we're not going to be out there anyway because it's not safe. It's a waste of time. So I don't have an exact timeframe of when do we, you know, everything's approved, when do we start? I don't have an exact timeframe, but again, we certainly, we're still, I mean, it's been 12 years and we're still digging ourselves out from the black eye that frac sand gave us. So we're not looking to give ourselves another black eye and shoot ourselves in the foot. We're really trying to do everything by the book, the right way. And again, we're a quarry. That doesn't always make us a favored neighbor, but we're trying to go out of our way to make sure we don't add anything to that issue.
I know some of the solar gardens we installed, the reseeding, the, the severe rain events came after everything was supposedly installed. So I was thinking of like stages, but, but maybe it's going to have to happen in stages anyway, just by virtue of work or, you know, it's not 3,000 feet of bare earth on slope. And then two weeks after everything's done and the seeds haven't come up.
Yeah.
The extent is right.
Well, the, there probably will be some aspect of it being in stages. The, by far the most challenging area and the one that will require the most fill is right here. So this is pretty flat. This, pretty flat. This, fairly flat. This is really the challenging area and that's where soil and water conservation razor eyebrows. That's where the county engineers raised his eyebrows. He also did have a couple of concerns in here just because the hill going down, grading down that way and how the road is currently laid out as designed. Again, my non-engineering background, especially in the western portion, those would be trivial concerns to, to address.
Go ahead, Marcia.
One of clarification from Jordan. It was discussed, and I don't remember if you did put it in a condition, that the county highway engineer would have to sign off on all road plans? Is that part of the variance?
Yeah.
Okay, so should we have it on the conditional use permit also? Did the county highway engineer sign off on any road plans? I'm looking for staff.
There's. Yeah, I don't know if it would be necessary, but.
I, I don't know. I mean, it's a duplicate, but.
They got it. You got it on the first one. I know.
Never hurts to have it twice. We kind of lose things sometimes. We might lose that variance thing.
Doubt if you got it right.
If you look at the findings of fact, what are the conditions? Does require an erosion and sediment control plan that's approved by the county prior to beginning?
Right, but no, I'm saying the road, the highway engineer isn't the NPDS permitting guy. The road construction, he weighed in it heavily. I would like any road, because we're talking maybe some changes as such that the highway engineers sign off on any road work.
Which page are you on that you're referring?
I'm just making up condition six.
The, the, any changes that would happen to the road design will be made in a conversation with the county engineers.
Okay, I mean, we could easily just put that as a condition so that we all are clear on that.
Olivia, I have a question in terms of reseeding. Is there someone that stops in and checks to make sure that there's just not, I forget what you call it, but effectively if you leave something foul long enough, there's just going to be kind of an overrun of, not necessarily invasives, but just that the reseeding is to a standard and that it isn't just, you know, whatever is the most aggressive takes over that filled soiled space.
Yep, so because it's an interim use permit, the, the completion of the road and all of the established seeding, vegetation, all of that, there would be a final inspection done by the county. So all of those standards that are in the plans now would be checked. So we would be going back out with soil and water, which is who we kind of lean on for a lot of those seed mixes, that type of thing. We'd be going out to say, yes, all of this checks the boxes with what you were proposing in the beginning.
Okay.
Yep.
Olivia, before you run away here, I got a question too.
Yep.
You, you've just mentioned it again. This is an interim use permit and I guess, I don't understand how you arrive at that because how does this have an ending date?
So the request for a conditional or interim use permit is due to the land disturbance on steep slopes. So a land disturbance is something that you start and you end. So a lot of times when there are activities that have a beginning and end date, there's something that we often propose as interim use permits because there's an identifiable action that happens that we can say, yes, this is done, therefore the permit should be done as well. Versus a conditional use permit would run with the land and would stay in effect for the duration of whatever the use is.
So in other words, with the, if there weren't an end date, they could keep revising the road over and over and over again, right? Without limit, right?
Moving earth.
I mean, it would be within their plans, right? So they couldn't just change their plans and do whatever they wanted, but.
So the conditional use is for the construction or the, the modification of the.
Moving of material.
Pathway, yeah.
Yep.
Moving of material.
It's not a permit for a road. It's a permit to move the material for the road. So once they're done moving that material, there's not a, a need for a.
Well, but we do have condition two that we can annually inspect. And that to kind of the erosion control issues that are always ongoing. They don't stop, you know, unfortunately. So we do have that, that there's an annual otherwise necessary evaluate compliance.
Thank you.
I did also think of one other question. It was mentioned, I'm not sure, I don't remember who it was, that the road does follow the property line very closely and that is true. A couple of reasons for that. One, again, there's already a trail there. It's not a road. The, another reason for that is trying to be good stewards of our property. We don't want an easement running through the middle of that parcel, whatever we wind up doing with it, even if we wind up selling it to someone else. And the third portion of that, again, going to the, that tricky portion, if you go back to page 75, I believe, is where those details are. 74, sorry. You can see that there's already a significant amount of fill going down the hill and we're trying to walk the line here and there'll need to be a little bit of tweaking with the, working with the county engineer as mentioned. We're trying to walk the line as if we move the road down the hill at all, because of the steepness of that downhill slope. If you move the road 15 feet over, that pile goes like another 100 feet down the hill. So we're trying to find a balance of, we don't want to tear up the hill. We don't want to, you know, that's mature forest there. I like woods. I am kind of sad about the thought of tearing it up as is, frankly.
Well, this wouldn't be approved unless this was the least amount of variance that could be approved.
Right.
Well, but you own 420, right?
That's correct.
Bezons 420, so.
That's just pointing to that little tiny rectangle in there, just.
Oh, what's the big, there's no number?
That's a different owner.
That's a, okay, that's a little confusing and I'm sorry. I thank you for that pointing out. So who's 420? Are they in the room?
So 420 is ours. 420 is the. So 420 is the five acre parcel right here. The Baskovskis own this and then I believe the Curtis's own this portion.
Yeah, I think so too, because if the questions come up further, then we'll maybe have you come back up and help answer them, okay?
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
So I move the, we open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Say aye to opening public hearing. Aye or nay for not opening public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is open. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Nancy Baskovsky. Excuse me. We have the property right next to, the road is going to ride, ride along our property.
Can you just give us your quick mailing address?
It's just. 20165 Quarry Hill Road. We're like right there. And what we were wondering about is how close to our property line can the road actually be built? How much, how much space are we going to have in between there?
And that is documented. Maybe the petitioner though can answer that because I know it, it beanders a little bit.
Yeah, and those 96 pages, it was, I, I didn't make it through all those 96 pages that they had.
Yeah, you, you can stay standing there because you might have other questions.
Sorry, I think that keeps falling.
Looks like page 70. Saw the big one, but I won't give you that fine 10 feet or whatever.
So the distance from the property line will depend a little bit on where the road is. So.
We don't have, we don't have a number of how far are you guys going to have that road away from the property line?
Well, it depends. So, and the actual driving, again, because especially in that first gully, because that's a deep gully, there's going to be a lot of fill there. The challenge is, again, to keep the fill pilot from going way down the hill and to keep it off of your property.
Yeah, because before you originally came to us and wanted us to sign an easement that all the water could come on our property. That was your, that was your original.
Yep, we did. And that was our.
We didn't.
One of the original plans that we.
I'm sorry. Point of order, a public hearing, public needs to be speaking to the commission, get through the public hearing, and then you can ask the, the, there can't be the, the, the back and forth conversation like that. It needs to be to the commission and then commission to the, to the, I know, it's okay. It's just, that's what I'm here for is to try to, try to, try to steer the ship in, in the right direction, so.
Was the one that came in here today. So, sorry.
Any other questions? I'll take.
Okay. Sorry, like I said, it's the first time I've had to do this. And, and then, okay, I addressed the, the fact that they did try to have us sign an easement for all the water to run on our property, which we didn't, we didn't sign because that's, you know, we were afraid of the well and the ground, groundwater. So we didn't sign that. And so now we're worried about what is going to happen with that water? How much, how much water runoff are we going to actually get on our land? And, you know, what's it going to do to the land? Even though I know our, part of our land is in agricultural programs, but it's not always going to be. So, you know, we have concerns about what that's going to do to the land. And then, yeah, he, he wasn't sure about how far from the property that the road is going to be. Okay, so mostly, I think I've, I think I've asked the questions that I, that I had right now.
Your concern is water and how far from your property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we get to the end of the public part, we'll try to go back and break this up. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Amber Baskovsky. I live at 803 West King Street. A concern my mother did not mention is that we have not been given time to have anyone, any lawyers go over this with us. This was dropped on us. Every lawyer we have approached has said we need to appeal to you for more time so that we can establish our rights, understand that we, our land is going to be protected. As he has stated, that is not the way it has always been with Bezons. And we want to make sure our rights are not being violated and we need more time for that. We need reasonable amount of time so that lawyers can go through that 96 pages of dense material and explain it to us. That's what we're asking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Anyone else wishing, wishing to speak for or against petition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. And for the third time, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, hearing none. Is there?
Move to close the public.
Is there? Jordan second says, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, nay. Another public hearing is closed.
Maybe we call Jamie to the mic.
Sure.
Jamie? Yep. Jonathan, I'm sorry. You say your last name was Schwab or Schwab?
Jonathan, I'm sorry, you said your last name was Schwab or Schwala?
Schwab.
Schwab, Jonathan Schwab, I remember that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're talking about the developers, the company that's, uh, spearheading this project and how much work they've done in Wisconsin. The last time I was in Wisconsin, I didn't see a lot of limestone bluffs. As a project of this scale and slope and bluff land magnitude been successfully completed anywhere else that you know about?
I don't know the details to that question.
It'd be worthwhile and behoove you maybe to find out if it's been done before successfully?
It would be worth looking into, yes, I mean, as far as I understand it, we're the liable party if, you know, if we have erosion downstream, um, we could take them to court, I guess, but we're the one that people are going to come after, not them.
It'll be a lot harder to clean up through the fact.
Yes. Yes, they've, they've done a lot of work with small and large projects on some tough sites, uh, everything from agriculture, they worked with Ashley over in Arcadia. They did some work, they still do some work in other mines, um, other gravel pits and stuff in Wisconsin, so. And they've.
It would just, it'd be interesting to know if this is setting precedence.
Yeah. I don't know for sure, I know they've been doing earthwork, the, the dad who owns it's eighty-six, and he's been doing earthwork since he got out of the Marines after Vietnam, so. He's done a lot. Does the planning commission have any interest in me, um, answering or addressing any of the neighbors' questions? I'm happy to.
Louis? My question has to do with how you're going to do handle the water, the, apparently with the culverts in there, you're channelizing it in a part?
Yes.
And then how, you said you were going to put riprap at the end of the culvert to dissipate it, so it spreads all over, so you're not channelizing the line?
Correct.
And, uh, what level of rainfall would that work for? I mean, uh, an inch or two probably, but if we start looking sometime, we get a derentches, and you get over three, four inches, is the effect might be devastating.
The standard that the Soil and Water Conservation District, um, goes by, I don't remember, let's see if I can find that for you, is the fifty-year flood. Uh, I believe that they also have the rainfall amount of a fifty-year storm. Sorry, give me a moment to look at it. So, that's the, that's the metric that we're working off of, and again, that's the metric that we will, unless, uh, brought otherwise, that's the, um, it's the bottom of page fifty-one. And then the, it's a planning conservation ten, twenty-five, uh, or fifty-year. So, their standard is actually ten or twenty-five, fifty years is the standard that we're using. And fifty-year in Winona would be six and a half, six point three inches in twenty-four hours. So, that, that's the.
You'll have enough riprap on there to.
That's, that's the standard that. Yes. Yes.
Sure.
And from how you've had it explained to you, the water that's running off, it, is, in which direction would you, is like, generally it flowing? Is it going, uh, to the north side or to the south side where the Nancy and Amber live, uh, in general? Is it collecting on which side? I understand it says here, it seems to collect east and west, but, and I'm just trying to make sense of kind of where.
So, I believe, I'd have to look at a top map to make sure, I believe, in all instances of this road, our hill, our property is either at the same grade or downhill from the Baskowskis' property. So, the, the area with the culverts, the most fill, the most challenging on all fronts of safety, erosion and water management, you know, bluffing protection, how do we do that? That's been our big concern, um, but even there, the water, all of that water is coming off of their property, as it, as it currently does, it comes off their property and goes down our property, winds up in Boulder Lake. So, that's been one of our, and that was something we talked about with the site visit, uh, soil and water, and the county were a little concerned that our original plan did have, it was very minimal amount, but a minimal amount of water coming off of the road base and going north. It was less than a half acre, but I said, you know, and I said, okay, well, we'll figure it out, we don't want to, we don't want to deal with this. We did at one point think about the possibility of an easement, and, um, after found out the neighbors weren't very keen on that, we said, well, let's, back to the drawing board, you know.
And an easement just to achieve what?
So, it'd be an inundation easement, uh, which, as I understand it, gives a right to, to basically make a pond. And it would be right along the property line, so those two gullies, it's a fairly steep slope on their property and it steepens on ours. So, there would be a potential, depending on the design of the road, for there to be a little bit of a damming action there, with water draining off their property. So, again, work through how we can deal with that to manage it on the downhill side, instead of essentially storing it on their property. If they're not willing to do that, then we won't push that.
Right. Do you feel as though the plans that you've submitted to the best of your ability address the inundation of water on your neighbor's property?
Yes. Yes, and talking about, again, on the, the county site visit, there was a, two soil and water representatives, as well as county staff and our engineer. Um, and we discussed several options on how to do that and reached one that was agreed verbally, and then also, I believe was in email and will be part of the plan going forward, is basically how do we, you know, fifty-year event or less, how do we avoid inundation? And we believe with the, the road-based material and the existing water flow across that road already, the risk is extremely minimal, and frankly, this is very overdesigned. Again, not an engineer, from what the engineer said, he said, this is a very, we're going off of very conservative, worst-case scenarios for rainfall. We're assuming even though that whole area that's draining into this is planted in conservation and is mature woodlands, we're assuming that it's going to drain like something that's not conservation and woodlands. And that's, that's been our design, again, overbuild, overdesign, make it so it lasts, make it so we're not causing problems for neighbors.
The one question staff can answer for, for the ladies in the back is the distance of the road to the property line, but timing, it, we're December, January, February, March, you're probably not going to be doing anything. And, and you even yourself said in the past, maybe the working relationship with the neighboring properties wasn't always the most cordial of the quarry operation. Is, is there a, uh, need to expedite this tonight or even next week, or two weeks into the planning commission to allow the adjacent property owners? We dropped this on them, you know, maybe what, ten days before the petition? And, and they're concerned, and I think rightfully concerned, what's going to happen to allow them enough time to check with? And again, they're not engineers or, or land surveyors or road designers, to let them get some more questions answered to them? Is there a reason that we couldn't, uh, table this till like, you know, even February or March to allow them some time to get answers to their questions?
The bind that that puts us in is, again, we've, and I'm not a lawyer.
Yep.
I don't know what happens to us if the county decides not to grant us an interim use permit for this. But we are in limbo, so I'm not totally opposed to the idea, but, and I understand, um, if it were my property, I understand that too.
I want to be able to understand what's going to happen, and it's, it's unfortunate, like I say, we give notice to people about, what, ten, fifteen days before a project of this scale and scope happens? And they just don't have time to react to it seriously, and, and it's, that's part of our process, not yours. But I'm saying, could we delay it till today is December, middle of December, the planning commission meets again, the end of January, what the, I don't have a date, the twentieth of January? And then it's the third Thursday of each month. So, could we possibly table it at minimum till the January meeting? That wouldn't put you, you already said somebody's on vacation for two weeks, it's the beginning of the first of the year. I mean, it really, and you're not moving any dirt in January, I hope not.
No, you can't, it's all frozen.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, just to, to create some goodwill with the neighbors where there hasn't always had that goodwill. You, you indicated you wanted to work with the neighbors and you wanted to be cordial to the neighbors, and it's just, I'm just asking to give them a little bit more time to, to digest all this material.
I think we could do a month.
Okay.
I think that's for Maureen, that's a reasonable.
Even sixteen.
Pardon me?
Sixteenth of January.
Okay, um, so we'll just leave that in limbo here. Uh, what, what was the distance, did we come with a definitive from staff, did we come a definitive distance from their property? How close can the road be? Pardon me? Yeah, I know, but there's got to be a dimension, you know, a basic dimension.
An idea of the closest it comes in.
Yeah, I mean, you said, we, we have building houses so many feet from, you know, we got to have something for roads.
We don't, um, but.
There, put that on your list, Doug.
There is, I mean, there is grading that is being proposed essentially on the property line, but part of the site visit was county staff and soil and water ensuring that any land disturbing activities that are happening on these properties are not negatively impacting the neighbors.
So, who has to provide the survey to make sure that whose property is whose? With the Bezos?
It's their responsibility to make sure that their project is happening on their property, correct?
And again, be just cordial to the adjacent landowner to know exactly where, you know, this is, because property lines sometimes are vague in wooded land and everything, so it would be the responsibility, yeah, um.
We did a survey this summer.
Okay, so that could be provided to the adjacent.
The county has it, yep, and the survey markers are still up and, uh, marked with pink flags. So, again, we wanted to, and, and actually, there's a portion on the western slope where we did have to do, we will have to do more work because the existing field road actually does wander onto our neighbor's property, which I'm assuming is, who knows how long it's been there? You know, when they did chains and cables and whatever, good enough, so.
Yeah, mules and chains and.
Yes, so we have, yes, we've had a recent survey of, uh, that parcel to make sure that we're not.
Okay.
Wandering onto anyone else's property.
All right.
Thank you.
But it sounded like Jonathan, for the erosion control and all the riprap, and it sounds like some of that may be on their property.
No.
I guess it.
No.
I'm up trying to stand.
The drainage is into their property.
The drainage, that's what I'm talking about.
So, that was, that was the concern was. Some of the drainage might go into their property, so tweaked a couple of things in the design to make sure that that, and that drainage, again, to be clear, was not off the road. That was off less than a half acre of the road base, which will be, you know, you've got a road fairly flat, and then you've got your road base that'll be angled at the angle of repose. I think it's two to one is in the, um, in the plans. So, that, that edge of that two to one will not be on that property. But that's, all of that is on our property, and again, that's our concern is we want to get as close to the property as we can without getting on their property, because especially, and where we're right up to their property, again, is in that, sorry, I'm sounding like a broken record, that tough area on the east end, where if we go down the hill, it goes from twenty thousand yards to sixty thousand yards, we move it, I mean, it's like, that, it's shocking how quickly the fill amount goes up. And, you know, I know economic concerns aren't the concern of the county, uh, so just from an environmental standpoint, we go from disturbing, I don't know what the numbers are, but the disturbed area goes up dramatically as we move the road away from the property line. So, again, trying to find something that works hopefully for all of us there. Yep.
I would propose, uh, that we table until January, what was the date?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen? Sixteenth? Uh, till, put it on the docket for January sixteenth to allow the, the neighbors to.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Build their knowledge of, of the scope of the project and can respond in appropriate way.
Steve, your thoughts?
Um, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, in addition to tabling, the, uh, commission probably should, uh, vote to extend the review period of, by thirty days or however much you want, so that we don't run over that sixty-day rule. Uh, that could also be a voluntary waiver by the petitioner. And then that would have to be followed up in writing, uh, with, uh, the reasons for the extension. And the reasons are just whatever they are, they don't have to be any particular reasons.
Okay, commission, uh, you heard what Steve had to say. Uh, what are your wishes here? I know.
Wait, I'm sorry, do you need to close the public?
No, we closed that already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just.
We were just trying to clarify issues.
Yes.
So, that's been closed, this has been our time, even though it's gotten back and forth here a lot. There is a lot of material here, but, uh, we also want to be a little timely here. Tabling seems like an easy thing, but yet they stack up as well, okay? So, Marcia suggested tabling, Steve said if we're going to do that, then we probably want to extend the hearing time, because we're at sixty days now. And then do we want to go sixty from the night? And then, of course, we'll have to ask the petitioner if he's willing to do that.
Where are we at with the sixty days? That, that falls outside the January sixteenth?
We're, we're just at almost thirty days.
At the January sixteenth, would that be within the sixty days? If it's within this? Oh, I'm, well, but I, okay.
Yeah, my concern is, is if winter and if any weather event came up, there might be a postponement, we don't want to do that, like tonight, we're all here. So, I'd rather be safe, and if we need thirty days, for example, let we stick with thirty days. Getting it further out, I think, is inappropriate, because then you're not getting appropriate response.
It's not the intent, no.
We recommend, and then the county has to be the final say on this, the county board.
Well, I move to table, uh, and ask the applicant to extend thirty days with the intent of having it on the January sixteenth, planning commission agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, rather than voting, I want to get Jonathan's opinion on this, because he's the petitioner. Are you okay with getting a thirty-day extension?
Not ideal, but I think it's reasonable, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you seconded it?
Correct.
Any other discussion before we vote, because I have a vote in a second.
Just, just wanted to clarify, I looked it up, the sixty days, original sixty days would be up on January twentieth. And so, you'd need to allow time for the county board to act as well.
The thirty is very manageable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for confirming it, because I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of tabling it, uh, at this time with the condition of a thirty-day extension for, for time to hear it, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, we got, how many nays? One? Okay. Ed, did staff, did you get that down?
Yeah.
Anybody abstaining? Okay.
No.
So.
And just a comment to the, the two young ladies in the back, it, it's your due diligence now to get the information, meet with our planning staff to answer your questions. Okay, it, it's your responsibility, not ours, okay? You're welcome.
And tentatively, we're on schedule for, uh, the sixteenth, was it?
Yep, January sixteenth.
January sixteenth at seven o'clock. Okay, moving along, uh, the other item, uh, this moved to, uh, number, page number ninety-one. And it's, we have a table dog kennel interim ordinance for the recommendations of a moratorium. I think, and I want to hear things right, uh, Steve, that's been withdrawn, right? So, that, isn't that off our books and all we got to do is untable it and send an N to Never Never Land?
Yes, pretty much, the, uh, the county board chose not to act on it, and, uh, then your next agenda item is what the county board did then, which was to restart the process, uh, without proposing an interim study period.
So, what I'm looking for is a motion to untable this and be done with it.
I so move. I'll second that.
And, uh, Jordan seconded, all in favor, say aye, what are your concern?
I thought we had, I thought the planning commission had to hold a public hearing.
So, so the first, the first item was the interim ordinance, which you had tabled, and the next item is the new proposed amendments. Yeah, right.
But we're just getting rid of stuff in the background here. Too many table things. But in this case, we're just untabling it. We're getting rid of that information because it's new, because it's no longer in front of us. So I had a, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye to untable and get rid of that.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Anybody not want to get rid of it? All right, thank you. We got that one done. Now we'll move on though to what Steve was getting at. The, now this is an introduction. They're going to tell us about the dog kennel ban, okay? And maybe we do have to, after we hear what we hear here, have to set up some type of public hearing. That should be on page 97, if I remember right.
Yep.
I think this got dropped half a dozen times. It still works. See here.
We got to get that on a lanyard.
While they're working on that, I'll basically just explain where we're at with this. So as the, the item that you just disposed of was the original proposal that the board had approved, which was to have an interim study period before making any proposed changes to the commercial dog kennel ordinance or the dog kennel ordinance. Thank you.
Okay.
And so at the November meeting, they voted to restart the process of amending the zoning ordinance, but without pursuing an interim ordinance. And basically that directed the planning and environmental services to prepare amendment language and the planning commission to hold their public hearing and make a recommendation. So what, what, what you have on your, to consider now is at this meeting, you could set a schedule for the public hearing and a schedule to discuss the proposed amendment. Then you'll have to hold that public hearing and within 60 days, provide a recommendation to the board within 60 days of that public hearing. So your recommendation would be to approve the proposed amendment, disapprove the proposed amendment, or approve a revised amendment. And so you have the specific changes in your packet of, of the changes that are proposed, the red items being things that will be deleted, the green underlying items, things that will be added. This kind of summarizes, because it happens in a few different places in the, in the zoning ordinance, it could be hard to follow. But basically, this deletes dog kennels as a conditional use from the agricultural resource conservation district and the rural heritage district. It deletes the definition of kennel and replaces it with a definition of dog kennel and animal welfare kennel and animal welfare entity. And that, those are there because the motion from February included allowing or providing for humane organizations that aren't doing breeding and government entities that are dealing with this issue and aren't doing breeding, aren't doing breeding.
Who came up with that? We didn't talk about that at the county board. Who, who came up with this animal welfare kennel?
That was, that was.
Talk about it at county board?
I've, I'm sorry, I don't have the record in front of me on that, but.
It's a new term. I.
So, well, yeah.
County board meeting for the last 22 years. So I, but I don't remember us discussing any terminology.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I understand your question now. So there was discussion that humane organizations that don't do breeding should still be allowed to operate and that the, the county or government, local government should be able to operate to, you know, collect stray dogs or whatever they want to do. So there needed to be language that allowed for that.
I think that's a stretch, but okay.
And the language, the language that staff came up, I came up with to account for that was to, was to divide up the definition of kennel into regular dog kennels and sort of humane organization kennels.
I have a question. Are we discussing this tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so do we let him, I have a concern with the term animal welfare kennel. So if you had, okay, so you're saying that terminology is, so say that animal welfare kennel had 10 dogs that came in. They were strays, abandoned, unwanted, surrendered, and placed up for adoption. But those 10 dogs were all pregnant. They all had puppies. You know, they all had eight, 10 puppies. What, what happens then?
Well, if it's, if it's, if there's no breeding of animals that occurs there, then it could fall into that definition.
No breeding, but if they came in bred.
Yeah, so an animal welfare kennel is defined as any structure premises where the breeding of animals does not occur, that is utilized by an animal welfare entity or government entity to board, to board and care for animals.
What would an oops happens?
And you could, certainly when you make your recommendation to the board, you could recommend language. If you think changes are needed to that, that's obviously what your role is. And then the other change would be to 10.11, which basically right now prohibits industrial mineral operations in all zoning districts. And it adds dog kennels to that and just cleans up the wording so that both those are, allow for grandfathering in of existing businesses. So that would mean that the existing commercial dog breeding kennels would still be able to operate as they currently do. And that is, and then the, the.
Well, we're not giving them permit, they already have permission. They have their conditional use permits. So we're not, we're not scrutinizing them at this.
No, right, no, that, right.
You can't expand it if they would want to do that.
Right.
Can't change it. How many other counties have done a, a dog breeding kennel ban?
I don't have that information.
Minnesota, state of Minnesota?
Yes.
I want to say, I can't safely say zero, but very, very few, if any. I could poll them, but I.
I would like to know because I hate pioneering stuff like this. Just to be safer on the ledger, just having.
Well, even, even your term animal welfare kennel, I mean, okay, in one sense, you're talking dogs. Animals, it's all kinds of animals. So it's cats, pigs, guinea pigs, goats, chickens, cattle. I mean, it's.
Turkeys?
Yeah. There's no limit. There's no limit to how many you can have in an animal welfare kennel, correct? I don't see any limitation.
Yeah, I think that might need to be tweaked.
And then, and then that whole thing of four or less, then when you have four, there's no rules, no health certificates, no veterinary visits, no, no nothing. It's free for all. But you hit that five.
Bingo.
You're banned. And a question was asked me, if we put a ban in place, can you still apply for a variance?
I don't have the answer to that right now, but I would think that would.
A variance is a breaking of the rules. We do it all the time. We have variances every month. So if you have a ban, can you put in for a variance?
I would say yes.
Nobody's looking like they want to answer me. Plans anything? Yeah, okay. Right, right. But you still can apply. Still have the, the economic opportunity to do business in Winona County. And that's what it says in our comp plan. You have economic opportunity to do business.
I would hope though, that when we do our new comprehensive plan, 150,000 seemed a little high. One would hope it'd be only 150 pages. So that's only $1,000 a page, but whatever. But I don't, I hope that our life doesn't come to where everything's a variance and everything's a conditional use. You know, hopefully we can come up with land use laws that are a little clear, more straightforward. But as we make more exceptions, you know, that can be more difficult. Here, I've thought about these two, your definitions, dog kennel, animal welfare kennel, and animal welfare entity. And, yeah, a lot playing around to try to deal with 10 existing dog breeding kennels. They're going to stay, right?
Yes.
So again, since this is just introduction, I, I worry about how we administer these things and how, how many of those backyard kennels are going to kick out their.
I mean, the ones that we got breeding right now are USDA.
At least they have some regular life, right? I think if some of the, well, out of the box ones that, that contribute to a lot of the problems, they're not refereed in any way. And if we create an environment where they pop up more than we defeated what we're trying to accomplish here. Do you have any more on the introduction here? Because I'm going to keep our discussion limited.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, that pretty much covers the extent of the changes. And I would just add that the kennels you're referring to now are not currently regulated under our, under our ordinance to the extent that they need to have at least that many dogs to be defined as a kennel under the current ordinance. And this doesn't change that.
But like Marcia, I get concerned on the next two, the animal welfare kennel. It doesn't seem specific to dogs, it's kind of general.
I think the word kennel is specific to dogs and cats.
How about the animal welfare entity then?
Saying animal, I mean, I think it's a little bit.
It could blur on its duck.
If it's truly dogs, then it should say breeding of dogs, not.
I agree, yeah.
Am I correct? If you want it, and I agree with you, when I see kennel, I automatically think of a dog.
Yeah, I think the intention here is for dogs. And I think that's what, I think it would be appropriate to specify that.
How can it be dog welfare kennel? Trying to make it look like a, you know, more pleasing term.
Where cats and anything show up, in my opinion.
Yeah, that would make sense.
They would make the same money that a dog kennel does.
It's pretty easy to get a cat for free.
Even before we get into the terminology, I think we have to ask the county board, what, what is the intent? We haven't, and, and they've refused to answer questions at a public meeting. What, what is the intent? Is it just to totally eliminate? Or is there, the question is that, been asked, is there something in the current conditional use permit process that can be changed, improved to allow this business to exist? And there are no responses. So what are we trying, even doing this, what are we trying to fix? What's the problem? The problem hasn't been, other than using the, the health, welfare, and general well-being of, you know, certain.
Public perception.
But is that a, so how do you?
Why we're here.
Public perception? We're a land use organization. This is a land use function.
That's what I got from an animal welfare dog kennel. Yeah, it's changing the perception of it.
But, but they won't say that there's, there's nothing in the conditional use permit that's acceptable to them, I guess by not answering it, which is, in my opinion, very unfair to any landowner using the current, you know, the zoning ordinance that we have.
They're opening themselves up to one hell of a loss as a county by being so ambiguous.
Well, and, and that's a point. And we've got lawyers sitting here that have always preached, not Mr. Kranz, but Consonman, is that you need specifics to avoid litigation. And I think you're exactly right. With the vagueness of what's wrong, what are we trying to correct and, and make different, there's no rational base, lawyer told me, there's no rational basis to deny them. Because we allow other animals, larger sizes with controls. We've got 10 in place with controls and conditions and everything. There is no rational basis to shut this industry down. So I don't know if we want to play into their, you know.
Well, they're, they're presenting it to us now. It's us to say, because they're dictating that this is where we're going.
Yeah.
And we've already told them where we, where we are, but as Doug will tell you.
Back again.
The dictation's back to us and it's coming back our way.
Right.
We'll have to hear whatever they come up with, public testimony.
Yeah.
And find out what you're looking for, and you might not find it.
No.
They may be personally looking for themselves with their liability going on here because if this is malicious, sovereign immunity may not protect the county commissioners. Well, and these are points we can bring up.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that, that's kind of my question. I'm a little unclear on what we're aiming to accomplish tonight. It seems like scheduling a public hearing is the.
I wish I had a little more documentation of what my public hearing is about. If it's just about this, or is there more to it? Doug, help me out. If it's just about the changes in this.
Yep, the slide that Attorney Kranz had up there has that, the next step for, for the, for you all is to schedule a public hearing on these amendments, or this, these, this amendment to the, to the ordinance.
We go back to that slide?
Oh.
We can really only take care of number one tonight, and that is our aim, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And this is just the introduction. The idea is that, you know, we bring it before you. You certainly can have conversation with staff and attorneys and that kind of thing. It gives the public the opportunity to know that this is coming next. And then you'll hold the public hearing, take comments from the public, provide more, ask more questions from staff, et cetera. But then you would have to act within 60 days.
Didn't our attorney say we cannot review things until we have a moratorium in place?
Well, they pulled out that moratorium is no longer good.
The choices.
Starting all over.
The choices back then were to have a interim ordinance, which was a moratorium on future dog kennels while this body studied this issue further and provided recommendations to the county board. That opportunity for this body expired, and then the county board went ahead with the ban language.
So do we want a public hearing on January 16th?
One of the other choices we have, being that we tabled one item for that next meeting, I would suggest that we do it at the February meeting.
All right. Anybody have a date on that?
February.
And maybe we can get some of the questions answered here because we spoke generic.
February 20th.
That's what I have, yeah.
The third Thursday, February 20th.
20th?
20.
So are you moving, making a motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion to schedule the public hearing for the February 20th Planning Commission meeting.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
I would like to amend the motion.
I'll hear your amendment before we vote. But what is your amendment?
That all permit holders be given a written notice by, via the postal service of this hearing that's going to be came.
I think that's fair enough. I'll ask the staff. We, we have 12 conditional use permits, but 10 are active, right? And we could, we could mail it, I think if I hear you correctly, Louis, all of the holders of a conditional use permit for dog breeding facilities be sent information regarding this hearing on February 20th. Is that reasonable? And of course, I have to do the legal one.
I'll second his amendment.
Okay, we're only voting on the amendment now. That's the mail.
Failing.
So all those in favor of the amendment to mail all of the dog breeders that have conditional use permits, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing done. The amendment is attached to our original one. Now we'll vote on having the hearing on February 20th. Now we'll vote on having the hearing on February 20th with that amendment attached. And we had a second on that, was it, John, you second that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So all in favor of February 20th with amendment attached. Thank you. Now, we, discussion, public hearing on cannabis ordinance. And that is, I heard some, 102, am I right? And, well, we'll hear what we have to say. We've had a lot of discussion on this already. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Just gonna give a preamble before we have a public hearing. In your packet, there's just a few pages. We've reduced it down from 16 to eight pages to roughly four pages now. The template that we received from Office of Cannabis Management was a shotgun approach. They were trying to address everything from the auditor's office to registration and, and staff has been working behind the scenes to kind of pick that apart and to take those steps individually through more appropriate channels to get that approved. There's resolutions that have been prepared for the use from all the townships and cities to express what their desire is, because that's gonna ultimately weigh into how this ordinance would take place. There's multiple ordinances. There's an ordinance against public use of cannabis. There's a, basically a registration process that's gonna be required. And I guess a couple of movements from the state level is we were somewhat worried that this preliminary lottery that the state was gonna hold was gonna start issuing licenses that would put us on the clock to take action. That has kind of fell apart due to litigation and some of the processes. I think the last indication from the state was that they will not be able to offer any preapproval licenses now until May or June of 2025. So some of the pressure is off, but we still have to be prepared in case we start getting confronted with applications. What staff has prepared in these pages, I think starting on page 102 of your book, through roughly 105, is the base bones that we would have the public hearing on tonight just to get some feedback and have some deliberation from the Planning Commission and offer any recommendations if possible to move on to the county board. The first page, page 104, which is on 102, are the standard definitions that we would have to enact into our zoning ordinance to distinguish the different types of uses that this cannabis industry would represent. Page 204 would be the administration sections. It's mainly referring to state statute guidance. 17.1 is where we envision that being starting and inserted into the Winona County zoning ordinance. 17.2 are now the performance standards. If we get back to the mission that we had gotten from the state for land use, for planning, we can regulate the location and setbacks and density. Where hands are pretty much tied on all realms of whether or not, you know, to allow it or not, but if it meets our zoning requirements according to our districts and meets basic performance standards, you have to allow up to a certain degree. And that's where we're looking for some guidance. The highlighted areas that are in yellow, 17.2 are getting to the setback requirements. And as a discussion starting point, we've recommended like A, 500 feet being the setback from a cannabis business to a school. You can opt up to 1,000 feet. B is we shall allow a setback from cannabis business to a childcare center. Again, 500 foot is the state max, 250 is the medium. C with a setback of allowing 250 foot setback from a residential treatment center, 500 feet is the max. D, Winona County shall prohibit the operation of cannabis business within 250 feet of an attraction with a public park that's regularly used by minors, including playgrounds, athletic fields. 500 again is the max, that is set by the state, 250. Can say that in the last week or so, we've been monitoring some of the other counties. Mauer County, which is Austin, I believe they, to keep the setbacks, I think, synonymous, they set 500 feet across the board, just so they, that was the magic number that Mauer County just recently enacted this last week.
I'm sorry, but shouldn't 17.2 requirements for cannabis retail businesses? Because the way, you know, I'm more concerned about growing and processing out in the, you know, out in the county lands. So isn't this more the retail? Maybe we should quantify it cannabis retail business?
We could. Again, this is right out of the state model language. I don't know if we're getting into more legal trouble by inserting retail and we're trying to.
Prohibits, well, I guess, would this would also prohibit somebody from growing it right there?
Yeah.
Yes, as a business. See, I like it as just cannabis, because you're covering retail and you're covering growing.
But we were talking.
Retail, you could say, well, I'm not retailing it.
Right. But then we've got land use on the back. Okay, I mean.
Okay. Moving on to page three of four, we have a land use table districts where we, basically, we have inserted our comprehensive zoning districts for the county. If you can see zoning districts, we've got egg, resource conservation, which is 90% of our county. Then we got RH, UR, CD, RR, B, which is our commercial and recreational, and I. And you can see where we have the individual acronyms. A CL means that would only be allowed through a conditional or interim use permit. If it's P, that's a permitted use. That means if it meets a certain specifications with their application, it'd be allowed as a permitted use. And I think the only ones where we make reference to that are like a transportation, delivery, trucking terminal in the I district, and then also a testing facility, which would be allowed in the CD, the commercial and industrial. The rest, like the retail, manufacturing, would all, we envision that be a conditional or interim use permit process. Performance standards, a little bit further down in that section, we talk about home occupations and home occupation cannabis businesses would be prohibited to be an option through a permitting pathway.
Why? You're limiting that, I mean.
I think just because of the residential settings, that they'd be, if home occupation, the very inherent nature of a home occupation is that that business is supposed to be secondary to the primary use, which residential is a primary use. And basically.
Grow so much infinitely. That would prohibit.
No, correct. This would be on the retail, commercial end of things. And it gets into almost, I think, some of the structural requirements and code in some of the other elements that are covered by state minimum specifications for these cannabis operations. So other than that, I mean, if we were, the questions are coming up about zoning map, I think somewhere in our packet, and I guess this next set of slides, should I, was someone gonna cover these? Do you want to cover those? Okay. We do have like a zoning map, and, you know, if the questions come up of where some of these type of uses could come up, we could quick cover that, and then we'd probably want to turn it over and let you conduct the public hearing on these standards.
I, I did not include the zoning map in this presentation, because it, the areas were so small that they couldn't, couldn't go through. So this, these quickly, is more about process, what the rest of the county is doing, not so much with the ordinance. So when we're done with this, then the next will be to go back over those highlighted areas and, and seek recommendations. And then you could do that after you, you hold the public hearing. This is just more of the background, oops, where we're at. And that says we can regulate the zoning and then certification. And also, it spelled out that our moratorium ended in January 25th. It kind of put us in a tough place, because they don't have their administrative rules completed yet. This just is another same slide you might have seen before that says, you know, what we can do, time, place, and manner is the zoning. Auditor Treasurer is gonna handle the retail registrations, and then there'll be some compliance checks from the. And so, again, these, just to go over some of the things that Eric brought up, we need to talk about with some of the other discussion points is be where, where do those setbacks, where are they applied? Are they applied at the property boundary or at the building? I think you can do that for each of those, if you like. Keep the wrong button here. So, as Eric mentioned, we've kind of bifurcated the registration part of this discussion from the zoning part of it. So later on, the county will be able to deal with issues of retail registrations, what the density of those will be, delegated delegations that we get from townships or cities to handle those registrations. That can all be handled separately, and so that we'll just deal with the zoning matters. So this, at tomorrow's county board, we are putting together a resolution, talking about application, the timing application. So what we, we, because we can't have a moratorium, we're, we're basically telling applicants through this resolution that we're not gonna accept applications until 90 days after which the state has passed the rules. I think if I was writing legislation, I might have written, you know, that moratorium language would have probably been written similarly, you know, that the moratoriums would expire 90 days after the state passed their administrative rules. We'd give local units of government the opportunity to check those rules with their local controls. So that draft resolution again is going to county board tomorrow. So today is public hearing. And then tomorrow is the resolution on timing. County board, depending on the actions that you take here today, they could act on this ordinance as early as the 7th. And then later, the county board will take on the retail registration ordinance. And a lot of that has to, will deal with the number of actual retail registrations that the county is gonna offer. A lot of that will have to do with the amount of delegate delegations we get from the townships and the cities, and our, and cooperation from the city of Winona as well. So with that, I think I'm, any questions on any of that stuff?
Have we heard back from, has anybody, small cities or townships formally told us you're in charge, county?
Yes, I've received one, I think from Dakota today. I received another one, I can't remember, they've been, they've been trickling in.
Okay, so we are getting some response, the county that.
Yes. Steve and I attended the.
Permit places to be allowed within the cities. Would there have to be any outside the county permits allowed then?
Yep.
What I'm getting is if there's seven permits in the city of Winona.
Theoretically, it could, that could dry up all the registrations. And that's just some of the things we need to work through yet, because I, there's some concern that we would have to have a, because the city of Winona is registering and zoning their own. So we may have to have some sort of joint powers agreement with them so that we can do that. It's a question whether we would need to do that or not.
I would add one other thing in this permit process, if they're not actively doing what things after 30 months that they get the permit, that it would be null and void if they're not in business.
30 months or 30 days?
30 months.
Oh. Is that something we can do?
Unless they want to do it for 18 months or a year.
Yeah.
Whatever seems reasonable.
Is there gonna be a situation where they get approved through the state, but here the county, we're gonna say, you know, like, too bad we've already hit, you know, there's no room at the end for your business? Like, and do we have like a response to that?
After they issue a license.
The LGU county would be put on notice after they issue a license that, I believe we have 30 days to respond whether or not it complies with zoning or not, so there is.
Once they get it in the state, that's the county we take.
That's a, that's a flag that goes up for us. We're gonna have to either say that, no, they don't have a conditional use permit, no, it's not zoned appropriate, and we see a problem.
Could you then speak to the process then? So they're gonna start here to get their CUP before they apply to the state?
I think they're trying to get pre-licensed approval to make sure that they have the framework that the Office of Cannabis Management has as minimum. But I think anybody that is searching this out should be doing their due diligence on all fronts, because if they're selecting a location in the city or a county that's not gonna be zoning, I mean, and they might be, you know, it's gonna be a rough pull for, to get that permit.
I have a little bit more on that. So the state, the state is setting up a, a Sella is just another kind of permitting database that we will have to have access to, and that's how we will obtain those. One of the things that has been pointed out by not just us, but everybody in this process is that when they wrote the statutes, they only gave us 30 days, and as you well know, there isn't anything we do here that's 30 days. So that does represent a little bit of a wrinkle. They, they promised that they're not gonna issue a license without allowing the local governments to do their.
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah.
The rules are changing.
It'll be changing.
Yeah.
But we still have to do our due diligence.
Yeah, and, and for that matter, and another thing that I would appreciate, you know, you guys to comment on, you know, we were asked to comment to the legislature in our lobbying that we do to them on this issue. So if there was things that you felt like, you know, our office should be lobbying the legislature to do on this, for those kind of comments as well.
I did have a question. Do we have setbacks for liquor stores similar to this at all? Okay.
Not in our rules.
Not in our, not in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And I don't know.
A new one.
I'm sure.
We don't, we don't regulate liquor stores, our office. Well, you can get a license.
Liquor stores are selling a lot of this stuff, too.
Yeah, there would be an option for a liquor store or a tavern under a CD district, Community Development, to come through like a conditional use permit or interim use permit, so it's all site-specific. And there, there could be an issue with setbacks, but do we have a hard and fast number in the ordinance for that now? No, we do not.
And is there like a, a certain variety of product that they, that any business sells that makes it a cannabis business, or if like they're selling infused products? Is, is that just a separate license, or how does that look?
There's a whole realm of what they call low potency THC. And they're regulated by food, Department of Ag, and also cannabis management. Those are already readily available out there. It's something that we're taking, we're looking at more of the high potency retail and grows and in those type of operations with this type of ordinance.
Thank you. I'd like to open a public hearing. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second that.
John moved, I believe, and you seconded it, right? Anybody wishing to speak for or against the cannabis regulation, please come to the mic, state your name and address. Don't look like a big crowd there, yeah? Anybody wishing to speak for or against the cannabis regulation? Please come to the mic, state your name and address. Okay, for the third time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this, this topic of cannabis regulation? Please come to the mic, state your name and address. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Jordan made motion and Louis seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, commission, any comments on setbacks, that kind of thing? Kind of, they ask you about what was highlighted in yellow, okay?
I guess a question from staff. Why didn't we just go to the max? Why did we? Why did we decide on less than maximum?
Looks like we went middle of the road on all of them.
Was there a rationale there?
Just for the starting out a discussion point. Then, you know, that could, there, there would still be available areas that would meet the setback. But anytime you impose maximum setbacks, there's always a perception that you could be zoning things out of certain communities. It's just, the city has very extensive GIS mapping of all their ball fields and parks and schools. It's going to be correct.
Especially the city of Winona.
Correct.
Maybe Lewiston and, and St. Charles, but we haven't heard from them yet. Dakota.
Correct. This will be just for the unincorporated areas of the county.
Yeah, okay.
But you would look different, right? So, you know, in the city, you can imagine these are going to be.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, very, very different and stuff.
What did the city lock in? They were going to talk about it Monday, but I don't know if they did or table it or what they did. And the city of Winona. On setbacks, did you get any feedback? The numbers I have were a while back.
Yeah, that kind of feeds into Jordan's question. They actually have, they wanted to lump some uses like liquor stores and like these type of uses. And they had more, they got a more developed municipal code when it comes to their ordinance as far as setbacks. And they try to regulate from residential dwellings. So they wanted those parallels drawn with the group uses. As far as I think where they're at, they're, they've been going back and forth as far as this density where it says one per 12 and a half thousand residents. First, I think they imposed three, but the last I seen, the last press article following that along is they've been kind of going back and forth. So I don't know what, what they ultimately decided on.
That's what I was going by too.
Well, if we set a maximum, it seems like you can always go down, but you can never go back up. It just seems like an unwritten rule. So if you had a school, you know, like this one for school, you know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet. I mean, 500 feet isn't a whole lot from a school. And I've had a lot of people in the city of Winona say in the summertime in their neighborhood, it smells like, you know, just walking around camp, more the campus area. It's pretty intense just in a, in a, you know, residential neighborhood. So I don't, I don't think 1,000 feet is from a school. And then the daycares, the daycares is, what was that? That was.
500.
500. I mean, I'd hate to send my grandkids to a daycare that smelled like.
Marsha, maybe you want to have one concentrated more towards the campus instead of exporting it out to where non-university related people are living and have their neighborhoods smell like.
Smell like it, yeah. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I mean, it seems like you can never.
Ratchet down.
Yeah, bring it back in. If you started far apart, then you could always say, well, maybe that's a little too restrictive and come in. But if it's, if it's too close.
1,000 feet.
Yeah, if it's too close, you can never push it back. Yeah.
I'm wondering about potential retail space and even the availability of there being storefronts to be occupied by this business. I don't, I don't know that we've got that much.
Well, downtown Lewiston's pretty open.
St. Charles has got a lot for sale signs.
But again, we don't know if we're, we're regulating them at this point.
I'm thinking more of the unincorporated areas and.
We don't zone them.
Right, so I mean.
Be registration.
Right.
What I'm even thinking, like, in the, in the unincorporated spaces, how many retail spaces are near a school? They are rather disparate, like they're generally well off the beaten trail, so.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'm thinking like as far as unincorporated, I'm just trying to rack my brain for schools that are in those areas.
I got one in downtown Nodine.
That was the only one I could think of. Is there retail space?
It might be more the thing that they're smelling, they're actually smelling cultivation sites. More than retail space.
You don't have to be indecisive.
But there, there again, this is all cannabis operations, not just retail stores. This is, you know, this is growing and, and everything. So if you're growing it or pro, is there a processing element here?
I guess that's what we retail, that's kind of the.
You can go back to that.
So this for, you know, let's go to maximum with everything. Like Mike said, a feedlot is a, you got to be 1,000 feet from your neighbor. Why would we treat this business any different than a, some of our existing businesses?
It'll be inconsistent, I can understand. Like Mower County, right? You said 500 for everything, including schools.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going with that is with the example of Nodine, is there a retail space that's over 1,000 feet from a school there?
Well, it's the old general store. That's probably, that's right across the street.
Economic possibilities there in Nodine.
I'm trying to think where there's schools. There's no school in Dakota anymore, right? That's, that's a.
That's right.
Dog care facility or something, or what is it?
I think it's something else right now.
Okay.
But the other schools, you have Silo, you know.
Oh, Silo, I was thinking of.
I'm trying to think of another one. Those two come to mind.
Yeah, St. But that's in Lewiston.
Yeah, that's going to be Lewiston.
Well, there's, there's a Ridgeway School.
Ridgeway School.
But there's no houses or anything.
Oh, they're just down the road. I mean.
Well, yeah, but it's well over 1,000 feet.
Yeah, yeah, it should be. It would be, yes.
Well, like you said, let's go 1,000 feet and if somebody colors and complains, you could always short it.
Yeah, I mean, we can come down, but it's hard to extend it.
So you, you want to do maximum of all of them?
Or just one in particular?
No, I'd go all of them. Just, just make it easy, all of them except the, the first one. The first one is school, 1,000. And then everything else is.
The rest of the way?
Yeah, the other ones are off.
I mean, the only thing I, in, there's a lot of spaces in, in the rural area that are like a, a live-in childcare facility. But I guess we don't have, yeah, that's, that's.
It's like five.
Yeah, that's not that bad.
Can school kids even walk 1,000 feet these days?
Yeah, right? No, I mean, I see what you're saying.
Kids walk farther, huh?
Well, we got to protect the Amish schools too. I mean, they walk.
Oh, they smell worse. I like, I like the middle of the road, but I, I, I hear your concern. I don't want to seem closed to these business opportunities, but 500 feet is not asking a lot. So maximum I could see.
Especially in rural Winona County.
Yeah, that's not, that's here to where we've parked our cars.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with the maximums.
So do I have a motion to make that recommendation change so we can move this back to the county tomorrow, I believe?
So moved.
I'll second it.
One more thing though before, it's, we also need to know where those are applied.
As opposed to boundary line or center of the building?
Boundary of the building.
I think it's easier property, property line.
That makes sense to me.
I would want.
Makes sense to me because it's tangible and easily measured.
And yeah.
You know, it's, it's a documented.
Because later if they build something else, it's probably closer, right?
Yep.
Then they would be violating our ordinance.
Do we have to remake the motion then?
Well, we haven't voted on it, so it's discussion. So we can amend it. To property.
So I'll make the motion to amend the recommendation to.
Add the property line.
To add, yes, to bring it to the property line at the maximum distance as set forth here.
And do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, an amendment to make it to property line, okay, for the setbacks. All in favor, say aye of the amendment.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now we'll go back and vote on the maximums here or whatever you guys give me a motion on.
Are we also, so then the other highlighted areas we're just moving as is, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that part of the motion, I guess, is what I'm getting at?
That was the maximum and we amended that. But now I wanted to vote on the, the maximum, that it was property line was established. And now to make it clear that we follow the maximums.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we have to address the home occupation thing in the.
We can do that in a separate one in the next.
Okay.
I want to deal with just setbacks. So do I have a motion now after we establish property line for setback, that setbacks be the maximum?
So moved.
And now a second?
Second.
Louis seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Opposed, nay. Okay, so we have one nay and none. And now home occupation is what your question was.
That's prohibited, right?
Currently it is.
So there's no setback issue?
It's prohibited, so there is no, no need for setback because if you want to change that, you know, from what it is, I'm open for that discussion.
You grow it yourself, you can't sell it.
Well, I guess, what's our definition of home? Do we have a definition in the ordinance of home occupation? Is that, I think we do. I, I don't have that with me. Eric?
Pretty sure we do.
Yeah.
Okay. Chapter four of our ordinance that talks about home occupations. I can relay the following definition. Home occupation, an enterprise of character which is clearly secondary to the main use of the premises as a dwelling and does not change a character thereof or have any exterior evidence of such secondary use.
So it's business on the inside, home on the outside?
Correct.
Signs or any?
It's no, doesn't appear to be a business on the inside.
You, you can't have the, the, that, like the guy up by Zambroda.
On 52?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is his home, but.
Yeah.
Wacky tobaccy home.
I believe that we've taken prohibited as a home occupation.
Well, we're making no change.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we don't have to do anything.
All right, all right.
At the end of all this, I'm going to ask.
I'm not sure about that.
I'm just going to ask a motion.
I'm not sure how you know it. Doesn't appear as such.
Forward this back to the county commissioners.
You don't have a big.
With a recommendation. To plan, adopt an ordinance.
I would assume the home occupations will probably continue operating as they currently are.
Yeah, they're already.
Yeah.
Well, what you're not going to have is, we're going to have all these signs and all that stuff. You're not going to stop that, but if I live next.
Not coming in asking for a permit.
If I was in a busier area and the guy in the middle of my house, which I'm not too far away, he's advertising, he got all the traffic going in and out.
Yeah.
This kind of stops that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But as far as personal use.
Yeah.
You know, you know, we can't have minions all over.
Word of mouth, the word of mouth businesses exist.
So any more discussion? Otherwise I entertain a motion.
Just one, I guess, maybe if you just wanted to endorse or say that chart that we've kind of aligned those districts if that seems acceptable at, at first glance, yeah.
I think it's fine and I like the onsite consumption part of it too.
I did, I had a question on that one. So cultivation in the ag resource district would require a conditional use permit?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay.
Commercial.
I got one more. If you turn around and growing hemp or, or sisal or whatever, would that be included to have the permit?
No, that, that, if it's just hemp, people could be growing it for the oils or for the fiber. It gets into more of an agricultural use, whereas this is cannabis and the high THC, yes, yeah.
And a question, so are the cultivation rules just as established by state or are we still developing that as a county?
No, the state has very extensive grow requirements. When you're dealing with that, it gets, there's a lot of more environmental considerations. Everything from air to water use to any byproduct. It's very extensive when you get into the environmental thresholds of those requirements.
So if it's permitted through state, how do we as the county, I mean, do we, do we, if we don't have ordinance that further limits that scope, how do we get in between them and the state?
Well, I think we're, we would be taking an application and that's why it's suggested as a conditional use or permitted use. We're going to see that they've done all their homework on, on those type of meeting those environmental thresholds. And that, that would be disseminated to the, to our, our boards to make sure that that all aligns with the state standards that they've set.
So does the conditional use then just give us the mechanism to inspect?
Correct, maybe place conditions, you know, we couldn't be getting into traffic, you know, those type of things or, you know, security, you know, air ventilations, exterior storage. It allows us to take a look at more comprehensive issues that would be associated with land use.
I mean, do you have any reason to believe that we're going to stop seeing soybean fields and start seeing cannabis fields?
All I've been told is that to get into this business, it's, it's not going to be anything small by any shape of, of the imagination. It's going to take some severe investments on behalf of these people to meet all these requirements that they're going to be facing, so.
All right.
And they still have to come and get a conditional use.
Sure.
So they got to tell us what they're doing.
Right.
You got to pass a hurdle like we've been doing tonight.
Okay.
So any questions on that land use district table?
Both could approve it.
I'll say it then.
Okay, I got a motion to approve in a second. Oh, and I guess we're just dealing with the land use district table. Is that what you wanted, Eric?
Yeah, just.
Because I didn't want to carve out a lot of stuff, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the land use district table is the same, okay, is what's been recommended.
Subject to change.
And that's just part of what we're doing here. This is a moving target. Eric and Doug have made that really clear.
Do we have to make approval or recommendation on the performance standards as listed? It's the home occupation component?
We already did that. We didn't want to change it.
I wasn't.
Okay, we're wanting to leave those things. And this is an outline for the county to deal with tomorrow.
Fair enough.
Okay, so. For the whole ordinance, do I have a, a motion to accept it as we've adjusted it? Going from page 102 all the way to 105?
I'll make motion.
Is there a second on that to adopt and recommend this back to the county for their further work tomorrow?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a point of clarification. I think we should have a date on this because it's going to change. And there's no date of when we.
Oh, like as, as we're seeing it today?
Maybe I missed it, but I assume it's going to change. So I think in, in the past, I've had the wrong documents because it didn't have a date on it. So if we could put a date on it, I think it would be beneficial.
I assume that our staff is going to date it tonight.
Well, there's no blank here for date.
But I went back to Doug's slide about 90 days after.
Well, I'm saying this is what we agreed to today and the county board tomorrow, and we may change it in.
Well.
So we need a reference what, they know what I mean. They know what I'm talking about.
As of now, we've authorized this to go to the board so they can do their job tomorrow, I hope, to keep ahead of our deadline here. Because after January 1st, we all kind of drop dead and then the state does whatever they want.
Get the date out tomorrow too. Okay.
Well, they can do whatever they want, and I, I see this as a real moving target, okay? And I wish it wasn't that way, but it is. And to the legislature, when they pass stuff, they should have a plan and an understanding of what they really passed, because they did not on this one.
There is no, there's no county that will argue against it.
At the wee hours, they pushed this through and then they said, well, we'll write it later.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What's her name from California said we got to pass it first and then we're going to get to read it.
Pelosi.
Well, they didn't even have this written, so we couldn't read it.
Well, they probably didn't have that written either.
So that's why we, thank you. I think it's good to get it to four pages.
Yeah, just a clarification, tomorrow is just a resolution that we're putting forward on the 90 days. This will then go.
January 7th, right?
January 7th, yeah.
Is when you really do it, but at least you'll know where we are because we won't be meeting again.
But you still need to vote on the, on your motion.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, there we have it. We do, Lynn, I think you're, Lynn, you've been here six years, right? And thank you. Lynn has been very, very dedicated, studies things.
Yeah. Please, questions?
And I appreciate your thoroughness, thoughtfulness.